Service worker three. Working at CBWD means carrying on a family tradition for Joey. His dad was a Zanero for 28 years. And his younger brother, Jason, is a lead water management specialist. Raised in Thermal, the Coachella Valley High School graduate says working at Culligan Water with a strong mentor prepared him for work here at the district. Joey started as a service worker, moved to construction, and settled as a service worker in West Shores, where he's been for the last three years. Down here, we are jacks of all trades. It's commenting on West Shores being fairly far away. He says, describing the site's crew of nine, "A West Shores worker might operate a backhoe, fix and lay pipe, troubleshoot boosters and well sites, install meters and handle customer calls, or work on a CL2 route." Camaraderie among his fellow workers ranks high in his job satisfaction. It's like a brotherhood here, he says. Joey's wife is an Indian high school nutrition specialist. Together, they have three sons and one daughter. And they enjoy taking the boat out to the Colorado River or zoom over the dunes in Glamis. I'm guessing that's not in the boat, though. And then another kind of similar. Emmanuel Leseves, domestic crew chief, 20 years. Emmanuel is a native who grew up in India and San Pedro and graduated from Coachella Valley High School. He learned his trade working for Valley Plumbing. At CBWD, he worked in valve and hydrant for one year, then as a service worker until he became crew chief at West Shores in 2016, which is about 40 miles southeast of the Coachella campus on the west side of the Salton Sea. West Shores serves communities with some of the oldest pipes installed by CBWD. "I like being in charge of my own facility," Emmanuel says. "The biggest challenge is keeping up with the workload." In his spare time, he takes trips to Ensenada, where he and his wife Iris and two sons enjoy some family visits, beach time, and fishing. So again, 20-year anniversaries, guys, come on up. And I'm guessing you haven't driven to West Shores yet this morning, right? You're on your way? Yeah, congratulations, guys. Nice job, guys.
20 years in county, right?
Yes.
All right, now, get an opportunity to speak.
Yes.
What do you think? Who wants to go first? You can pass if you want. You can say anything. Yeah, be recorded. So keep it clean.
Thank you, mate, 20 years. Thank you, thank you so much.
Well, thank you for being here. Thanks very much for your contributions.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm thinking about maybe remarks at the 25th anniversary, right? I know. Thank you, buddy.
Did I throw my public hearing script away? Gosh, why would I do such a thing? I threw it in the trash. Okay, so on to our public hearing item 8A. At this time, staff will provide a presentation on the 2020 census data and the redistricting of Coachella Valley Water District division boundaries as required by Election Code Section 22000 et sec. Following the presentation, we will open the public hearing. And we have Sylvia Bermudez, clerk of the board, and Jeremy Holmes from Best Best &amp; Krieger doing the presentation.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. President. I'll just do a brief intro and let Jeremy take it away. We are here to conduct a second hearing as required regarding CBWD's redistricting and changes in boundaries. At the last meeting on January 25th, staff presented two options. At that time, the board directed staff to come back with additional data and some additional maps to look at, which we have done, provided to the board at this time. I'd also just like to note that the district did do noticing. We provided a notice in the newspaper. We also have a website. We have an email for members of the public to provide comments. And then we also worked with our communications team to provide social media information. And so at this time, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jeremy for the PowerPoint presentation.
Good morning, everyone, board directors. And, you know, we're here today for the second public hearing for the district's redistricting effort. You know, based on the requirements, after the public hearing today, it's possible for the district to adopt a new map and essentially just end this process. So with that being said, I got a short presentation to get into. So Madam Clerk, could you bring up the presentation, please?
Hold on, Jeremy. It seems that... I apologize, but the PowerPoint is not located. Give me a quick second.
No problem. I also could share my screen, by the way, if that would work as well.
That probably would work, huh?
Hey, give it a shot.
Okay, Jeremy, I'll go ahead and give you, if you have the ability, to go ahead and share your screen.
Let me get it up right here.
There you go. Thank you.
There we go. So as I mentioned today, we're here for the second public hearing regarding the redistricting process. In terms of redistricting, just to provide a brief reminder again, that every 10 years, when, you know, the census comes around, it's time to adjust local population divisions in order to accurately reflect changes in population. So the purpose here today is to take a look at the draft maps that were presented at the last public hearing and as well as discuss the next potential steps and potentially adopt a resolution choosing a map option. So in terms of the timeline, just wanted to point out that under the requirements for special districts, that special districts only need to have two public hearings in order to adopt a new map. So, you know, this is just a brief overview of the process that the district has gone through. You know, in November of last year, we had an informational meeting. In January of this year, we had the first public hearing, which showed off two draft maps. So now we're back here at March 8th, the second public hearing. And I just wanted to point out, too, that there is a statutory deadline of April 17th. So if the district is inclined to potentially request map revisions or new map options, just want to keep in mind that there is still time, but that April 17th deadline is approaching soon because there's an election in November of 2022. So just to provide a brief overview again for members of the public. So board members hold four-year terms. Divisions 1, 3, and 5 have elections in November of 2022, and Divisions 2 and 4 have elections in November 2024. In terms of the laws and rules that govern the redistricting process, there's a three-pronged approach here. So in terms of the most, the highest rung here, we have the federal law requirements. So essentially, we want the divisions to maintain a substantially equal population, and that's based on U.S. constitutional law and also to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. So the Federal Voting Rights Act is mostly tailored to making sure that the minority voice is heard, including a requirement to draw majority-minority districts when possible. You know, essentially, for federal law, it's just equal population and making sure the minority voice is taken into consideration. In terms of the California criteria, these factors here mostly go into how the maps look when they're actually drawn. So keeping, you know, in order to keep the drawn maps making sense and to increase transparency, so topography, you know, essentially using natural landmarks as division lines, you know, potentially using the, you know, freeways, mountains, rivers, et cetera. Geography, trying to keep the more rural and urban areas together where it would make sense. And, you know, cohesiveness, making sure that the districts are contiguous, integrity of the territory. Essentially, what that means is just making sure that the districts are, you know, compact, they're contiguous, that there's no pockets located within another division. And then the communities of interest is, that prong is just dealing with groups of people that have common interests where it would make sense for them to be located within the same division. And finally, you have the other traditional principles. So once the federal law criteria and the California criteria are satisfied, then we take a look at some other principles that, you know, are just good governance policies. So you want to minimize the amount of voters shifted to different election years. You know, you do that to respect the voters' choices and, you know, the continuity in office. So if, you know, the public is happy with their director, you don't necessarily want to, you know, make changes that would alter that. And, you know, where possible, you want to account for future population growth. And something else that goes back to, you know, respecting voter choices and continuity of office, it's generally better to preserve the core of existing districts where possible. So in terms of the maps, so here's the existing map of the district. You know, the existing map is mostly fine from the California criteria. There isn't any major issues here. So, you know, with that being said, you know, most of the potential need for redrawing maps comes from the 2020 census data. And just to provide a brief overview again, so when we're looking at the population deviation here, so population deviation is our ultimate metric here. So essentially, we want to ensure that the population deviation is under 10%. And what we do here is we compare the population deviation of the district with the highest population, so District 4 here, and we compare it to the population deviation of the district with the lowest population, which is Division 5. So when you compare those ranges, you get a total deviation of about 19.65%, which means that the, you know, we have to go through the map redrawing process in order to get under the 10% threshold, which is a threshold discussed by the U.S. Supreme Court. So it's a very important number there. So in terms of other findings, so again, we're above the 10% acceptable range. And in terms of the Federal Voting Rights Act requirements, we know that drawing majority-minority districts are possible because there are already two majority-minority Hispanic divisions within the district, so Divisions 4 and 5 are already majority-minority Hispanic voting divisions. And again, that just means that the current division boundaries have to be adjusted for population balance while also preserving the two majority-minority Hispanic voting divisions. So in terms of draft maps, BDK, we presented two maps at the first public hearing, and essentially, the board requested the movement data for these two map options. Essentially, how many people, like how many people moved in between divisions? So just to provide a bit of a refresher here, here is map option 1. As you can see, it's very similar to the district's current maps. In terms of adjustments, I'll just give the very high overview at this point. So, you know, Division 1 gained the Sky Valley area with new boundaries at Rio Dale Soul and Thousand Palm Canyon Road. And that area was given from Division 2. So in terms of changes for, to Division 2, Division 2 gave a portion near the Hidden Palm State Ecological Reserve to Division 3, this area over here. There was no population there, so that was just a pure map redrawing to follow U.S. census blocks. And, and again, in terms of other changes here, it gained a portion from Division 4, the area north of Avenue 38 over here. And in terms of the other divisions, so for Division 3, Division 3 also had a few minor adjustments. Again, it gained this portion of the, near the Hidden Palm State Ecological Reserve, no population. It gained portions by the Martinez Canyon Trail over here. And again, no population, just a redrawing of boundaries based to follow U.S. census blocks. In terms of a population shift, it actually gained a portion in this area over here at the boundary from Division 4. It gained from Division 4 an area north of the 111 bounded by Miles Avenue, Madison Street, and Jefferson Street. So in terms of Division 4, so naturally, Division 4, since it was the division with the highest population, population had to be redistributed from Division 4 in order to make that deviation go down. So, you know, for the most part here, if you notice, that this eastern portion of Division 4 has been given to Division 5. And there's also a really small area of Division 3 that was actually given to Division 4. It's a really small portion between the 10 freeway, Avenue 42, and Indio Boulevard. So in terms of, to, you know, point out changes to Division 5, again, this eastern area was formerly Division 4, has been given to Division 5. And there's also a smaller portion, a little bit lower down here, in between Avenue 48, Van Buren Street, and Historic Route 86.
Hey, Jeremy, sorry, this is Sylvia. I was thinking, we can pull up the additional attachments that you did for map option 1 and 2, where you circled the changes for the board? And then I actually made copies, so I can distribute that. So as you're discussing that, we can, they have something to look at. So if you'll want to, you can pull up that PDF for map option 1.
Yeah, that'd be great, actually.
Little tiny changes.
Okay, so we have map option, oh, map. We have map option 1, Jeremy, up on the screen with the circles highlighting the changes.
So, yeah, so in terms of the changes here, and again, this mostly showcases what I've been talking about. So, you know, there's a, it's marked number 1 there, that's the changes for the Sky Valley area. Number 2 down here are the changes by the Hidden Palm State Ecological Reserve. So that's, you know, from Division 2 to Division 3. And again, with the boundaries marked number 3, that's a minor shift from Division 5 to Division 3. Again, there's no population there, so that's just a map reboundary. So in terms of Division 4, so, and can you zoom in a little bit, please? So in terms of the population gained by Division 2, marked number 4 there, that's the area that I was talking about that's north of Avenue 38. That was previously from Division 4. So, and then there's also that small area marked with number 5. That is that, that small portion bounded by the 10 freeway, Avenue 42, and Indio Boulevard. And number 6 there is that, again, another smaller portion given from Division 4 to Division 3. And it's the, north of the 111 bounded by Miles Avenue, Madison Street, and Jefferson Street. And then, you know, finally, number 7 there is essentially the, what was formerly the eastern portion of Division 4 has been transferred over to Division 5. So if, with those explained, let me go back to the PowerPoint so we can take a look at the movement data here. So, let's see here, let me bring up my screen again.
Do we have a handout for option 2?
Yes, we do. We'll go over option 2 in a little bit after I cover the movement data for option 1.
Yep.
I emailed it to all of you guys as well. I had to ask for this, so it's in your email, too, option 1 and option 2.
So just to provide a brief reminder as well, in terms of map option demographics, map option 1 brings the deviation down to 3.21%, you know, well under the 10% threshold that we're looking at here. In terms of the movement data, so this is the data that the board wanted to see at the last meeting. So essentially here, with these changes, we've moved a total of 10,851 persons. So to break that down further, movement from Division 2 to Division 1, a population about, you know, 2,528 moved between those two divisions. In terms of movement from Division 4 to Division 3, about 3,778. And in terms of movement from Division 4 to Division 5, about 4,545 people. And in terms of election shift, no one's been decelerated. I think that made its way into the staff report, but we caught it for, you know, the presentation today, that all of the changes and elections for these people moved have been shifted up to 2022. So no one's getting delayed to 2024, which is the best option if someone has to change election years, is that they move up instead of not being able to vote for, you know, a additional period of years. So just to summarize here, again, we're at 3.21%. Divisions 4 and 5 are preserved as majority-minority Hispanic voting divisions. You know, the divisions are created here are a bit more compact, particularly with respect to divisions 2, 3, and 4. And this moves overall 10,851 people between the divisions, which is about, you know, just over 3% of the district's population. So in terms of map option 2, let's see here, can we bring up the PDF for map option 2? So for changes for map option 2, the, you know, there's a lot of similar changes here. Let me bring up. So essentially, you notice that the, the first thing noticed is that for the changes between Divisions 1 and 2, that the Sky Valley area has been given to Division 1. Essentially, that's the same thing as map option number 1. So that's marked number 1 with the red circle. And if we scroll down to the boundary between Division 2 and 3, you know, it's that same area by the Ecological Reserve, so the exact same change made there. Again, no population, just to, just done to follow the U.S. census blocks and to make the district a bit more compact. That's marked by number 2 there. So number 3, again, is the exact same one in the first map option, some slight shifting of boundaries between the Martinez Canyon Trail area. Again, no population there that's changed, it's just to make the divisions a little bit more compact and to follow U.S. census blocks. So let's scroll up to Division 4. So this is where the most amount of changes are. So Division 4, marked by the number 4 of the red circle, this area here. So essentially, this is a area that's been transferred from Division 4 to Division 2, and it includes the area north of 40th Avenue in between Avenue 38 and Adams Street. So that's like the middle chunk there. So for the northern chunk there, again, it's an area north of Avenue 38, and that's a very similar change to map option 1. There's also a smaller chunk located within that circle. That's north of Country Club Drive with a boundary of Avenue 40 as well. That mostly contains a significant amount of car dealership, so there really isn't too many populations that's moved in that particularly little chunk. So in terms of the changes, so number 5 marked by the red circle, that's an area that's been shifted from Division 3 to Division 4. And that area is bounded by, essentially bounded by the 10 freeway, Indio Boulevard, and Jefferson Street, and it follows that, those boundaries there. Again, there's not really population there, it essentially, you know, just covers streets and empty, so that's not a huge change. So number 6 there, marked by the red circle, is a change where population has been shifted. And this is the area between Monroe Street, Avenue 48, and, and the 111, and then also marked by like this irrigation channel towards the, on the left side there. So that area, you know, bounded by those streets that I just mentioned, so that's an area where population has moved. And again, we're not looking at major changes here to the district's maps. So in terms of the number 7, so the change marked number 7, that's an area that's been transferred from Division 4 to Division 5. And this is the area between Avenue 48, Jackson Street, Dr. Carrion Boulevard, and Van Buren Street, and then there's like a bit of a boundary that look like a step here that go along the Historic Route to 86 and the 111, et cetera, here. So again, that is also a change that shifts population amounts. As I'll, you know, I'll go back to the PowerPoint in a little bit, I'll break down the actual changes between the divisions as well. It's a very similar number to the amount of people moved in map option 1. But to detail the final change here for number 8. So essentially, number 8 is the portion of, the former portion of Division 4 east of Dillon Road has been transferred over to Division 5. And, you know, that's a pretty easy change to see, so essentially Dillon Road has been the new eastern boundary of Division 4 under this map option. But in terms of, you know, as you can see, that the map options are fairly similar, but map option 2 was drawn with a bit more attempt to ensure that Division 4 maintains similar boundaries as its current boundary. So, you know, versus the map option 1, where there was a different delineation on the eastern boundary portion, this one was designed to follow the current boundaries a bit more closely. So with that said, let me go back to the PowerPoint here. Clear my screen. So the map option 2 demographics, the total deviation is about 3.45%, so it's a little bit higher than map option 1, but it is, you know, you know, we were falling well under that 10% threshold. So in terms of the movement data, so map option 2 results in movement of about 10,673 people between the divisions, you know, which is a little bit smaller than the movement of map option 1 by about just over 100 people. So in terms of particular movements, so from Division 2 to Division 1, it's essentially the same. the same, so it's a population movement of about 2,528 people. In terms of movement from division four to division two, there's about 657 people moved, which is different from map option one. From division four to division three, got about 2,732 people moved. And then from division four to division five, about 4,756 people moved. In terms of election shifts, it's very similar as to the changes in map option one, where most people are accelerated to 20, the 2022 election cycle, with the exception of the changes from division four and division two, since they share the same election year, there's no change there. So, in terms of the summary of the findings, so again, we got a total deviation about 3.45%. Divisions four and five are still preserved as majority-minority Hispanic voting divisions. You know, this one creates, you know, slightly more compact voting divisions, especially with respect to divisions three and four. But again, there was a bit more of a mindset to make sure the current boundaries were followed a bit more closely. And finally, you know, it overall moves about 10,673 people between the divisions, so that's about 3% of the district's total population. So, ultimately here with these two map options, very, very small adjustments just to get that population deviation down. So, in terms of the next steps, so after the public hearing today, since this is the second public hearing, the district has the option to select a preferred map and adopt a resolution approving the final map, and, which essentially ends the redistricting process. Alternatively, you know, if the district wants to see more revisions to map options, there's still time, again, there's that April 17th deadline. So, there's still time if any revisions want to be seen, but following the public hearing today, this, essentially this process could be ended today. So, with that said, that ends my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that might come up, and any questions that also come up during the public hearing.
Thank you. So, this is the time and place for a public hearing to allow for public testimony and comments regarding CBWD's proposed division boundaries. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Does anyone attending this public hearing wish to be heard to give your name, address, and limit your remarks to three minutes? Don't see anybody.
Staff members.
Staff and council.
Nobody.
Nobody online?
And we do not have anybody online.
Okay. Ms. Bermidas, have we received any written communications?
No, Mr. President, we have not.
All right.
I have a question.
Yeah, we could, I guess, close the public hearing and then go to board comments, yeah. All right, so, there being no further input, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. The board will now take up discussion and provide direction to staff regarding the proposed division boundary adjustments and potential maps to be considered at the second public hearing. This is the second public hearing, all right, that's an error, yeah. All right, yes, go ahead, Anthony.
So, this is for the consultant. Was there any look, I mean, it looks like on option one and two, the area in division two, Sky Valley, is being taken away. Was there any look at avoiding that?
I believe that the reason why that area was transferred was because division one needed to gain a bit of population. And in terms of the areas where division one could actually gain population from, essentially division one could gain population either from division two or division three, but since division one shares an overwhelming majority of the boundary with division two, some population needed to come from division two in order to increase division one's population. Because I believe division one actually has the second lowest population of the districts, of the divisions. So, in terms of the changes, why Sky Valley was particularly chosen, it was because the population there had the least amount of impact. In terms of just the population.
Yeah, I don't know how you're doing your, how it's calculated on your deviation where we need to be below 10%, because it just seems like just small numbers and populations change the deviation, and it seemed like we were all pretty close before. I mean, so division two had the largest population, and now it's going from the largest to the smallest. And so, it just seems like it's just flip-flopping, but I guess there must be some formula to prepare in that.
Yeah, I can explain, you know, how the population deviation is calculated. So, essentially what we're doing here is you take the overall population of the district, so the total population right now is about, what is it, 355,383. So, you take that overall population, and that's based on the 2020 census data, and you divide that amount by five, or the number of divisions. So, the number that you get after you divide it by five is the ideal division population. So, the ideal division population here is, you know, what is it, 71,076. So, taking that ideal division population, you take that ideal division population, and then that's your method of comparison for the population deviation when you're looking at the current division down.
Hey, Jeremy, let me just interrupt for a minute. Yolanda, if you could put, there you go. We just wanted to put slide number seven up, which showed the existing division boundaries, the existing population in each division, and then the ideal population and the total deviation, so that at least in the table, the numbers might make more sense when combined with the words.
Exactly, and so, so, again, so we're comparing this, you know, the current population of each division to that ideal population mark. So, that's where the percentage deviation comes from. So, when you're taking a look at the existing boundaries, so we'll notice that division four here has 80,498 people within that division. So, when you compare it to that ideal division population of, you know, just over 71,000, so there's about a 13.26% difference between, so essentially, division four is 13.26% over the ideal division population. So, that's where that 13, you know, roughly 13% number comes from, is when you compare it to the ideal population. So, in terms of calculating the other divisions, so, you know, then we looked at the division with the highest population and the division with the lowest population. So, division five is a division with the lowest population. And again, we compare the total population with that ideal division population. So, since it's lower than the ideal division population, that's when you get the negative percentages there, so it's about a negative 6.39% deviation. So, when you get those two numbers, what you do is you compare the range between those two numbers. So, you know, essentially, what you do is you ignore that negative there right in front of the population deviation for division five, and when you're just looking at the range, you add those two numbers together, and that's where that 19.65% number comes from. So, essentially, when we're adjusting population and making changes in population, what we're trying to do is make, you know, slight changes to the current population of each division just to bring that division down. So, by reducing the population of division four by, you know, 4,000 or something like that, you can get that 13.26% number way down, and lowering the overall deviation. But in terms of, you know, making changes to the map, you know, you also want to make sure that you're also addressing other areas where the deviation can be a bit high and drive up the deviation as well. So, again, there's a balancing act here.
So, to me, looking at this, in District One, 68,000, if you use that as your base, and you, and you lower that by 9%, so you add 6,000 to that, that's 75,000 roughly would get you under the 10% deviation. So, District Four needs to get down to the 75,000 people. And if you split that, 75,000, 5,000, 2,500 go into three, which surrounds four, 25, excuse me, 2,500 go into three, and 2,500 go into four, then it's less moving around. Doesn't that seem easier?
So, Jeremy.
Than moving, than moving people around in every district? This way, one isn't touched at all, two isn't touched at all, you're just taking some people from four and moving them into three, and taking some people from four and moving it into five.
But you're trying to get to 71, not 75.
Well, you don't have to get to 71, you have to get below 10%.
Correct.
Right, so 71 is not a number that you have to get to, you have to get below a 10% deviation.
Okay.
So, I mean, I get what you did, you're trying to get it as low as possible, but it just seemed like there was less moving around than what you did.
I think one of the other things that ought to be considered as part of this is looking at voting precincts and communities of interest, landmarks, topography, he's not just trying to, I mean, that all comes into the process of trying to identify what moves and what would be a better move when you look at those factors other than the pure population.
Well, I kind of agree with, well, I do agree with Anthony. I mean, if you look at the 9,400 in my District Four, and if you just took whatever you took out of four and put it in three and five, you're done.
You're done, it's over.
There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of.
Yeah, you don't touch one, you don't touch two, you just move, which you surround, three and five.
Seven, 84, about 84,50, which would take 84,50, meaning in three and five, you take it out of four, which puts you within the 3%.
It just seems like we just got too, it's just too complicated, I mean, you know, everybody's taking areas and, you know.
And, you know, just to, you know, also provide a, you know, bit of reminder, so if it is the, you know, the direction from the Board of Director to go back and potentially, you know, we do take revisions, and there is time to, you know, revise the maps before that statutory deadline. So, if, you know, that's something that the board wants to see, is essentially, you know, leave division one alone, and then essentially, you know, transfer area from division four to divisions three and five, et cetera, that's something that we can do and come back to you with on.
You're going to end up with, instead of, what are you moving, about 10,000 people right now? So, instead of moving 10,000 people, you're going to move 9,500 or 9,400 or whatever.
That's correct, but you're not, you're not, you're not touching division one at all, you're not touching division two at all. I mean, we're moving like full voting areas, you know, and potentially, you're moving, you know, minorities out of one district to another district. It just seems like there was a much easier way to do this without affecting every district.
If I may add, and Jeremy, please correct me if I'm Miss Speaker, I think one of the other considerations that is taken into this is trying to stay somewhat within the existing boundaries as it does relate to elections. Because just like us, the city and the county has also, the different cities have gone through redistricting, and their boundaries have changed, or will be changing as well. So, those are things that we want to consider for us to remain within the existing boundary so that voters within a city aren't split up completely as well. So, I believe that is something that BBK looked at as well, because that was something that I suggested be considered, coming from an election background. I know how that can impact when you do redistricting and you move voters from one area to another. So, that was something that we did try to do, is try and remain as much as possible within our existing boundaries, and also that they aligned with the cities and the county as well for voting purposes.
So, I have a question regarding, I mean, I think, you know, variations between both options are, from my perspective, relatively minor, so, you know, whether we adopt one of these maps or a variation of it, I'm fairly flexible, but I'm curious about the acceleration process, and, you know, we're looking between 9,000 and 11,000 people, voters who are going to be affected by an accelerated timeframe. So, can someone explain to me how those voters are protected and how they're informed of the changes and that sort of timeframe? Perhaps Sylvia.
Sure, so CBWD and agencies rely on the county registrar voters, so as, when we submit our maps to the county registrar voters, they take that in, they enter the information to then, you know, identify their voting precincts, their poll sites, and so forth. And usually, when voters are notified are during the sample ballot process, so a notification goes out to every voter and says, as part of the redistricting process, you are now in this division, you will now be voting here in your precinct, so that all that information is relayed to the voters through the county registrar.
And we received no, no public maps that were submitted by anybody in the public as.
Correct, we did not, we, so I created, I did not personally create, but staff helped me create a website where we had all the information. I also created a specific email, we've noticed it, again, we noticed it in the paper several times, we have it on the website, communications team used social media as another avenue. So, we have done extensive outreach, or at least tried to do outreach for the, for the public, and to date have not received any comments.
And if I may just real briefly, Jeremy, if one were to go back to do another map to change to the limited scope that the directors have mentioned, that may mean moving other lines, correct? Because you have to go where the voters are, so, in order to make that change. So, is that correct? I mean, I just don't want to disabuse the board that they think it's easy as moving from one, one number to the other, we, that could be done, but it may make other changes, is that generally correct?
Yeah, that's correct, usually when you, you know, start polling populations, so, for instance, you know, we just completed the process for a city client, and, you know, going through that whole process when there were particular changes requested, essentially when you start pulling population from one area, sometimes it can lead to, okay, we adjusted it by this amount here from this area, but by doing that, you increase the deviation of another, of another division, so sometimes there could be a bit more fine tuning that happens when you make, for instance, like a single change.
So, if I could just try and recap where we are, with both options one and two, if the board does not want to make the changes for divisions one and two, the changes for three, four, and five still seem to be available. So, the map options themselves don't necessarily change. If we just don't change one and two, three, four, and five in options one and two would still seem to satisfy where we're trying to get. So, I don't know that a different map option is required so long as we ignore or don't affect the changes that are recommended for divisions one and two. Three, four, and five would still satisfy the need, and we could still take action today, or do we have to publicly notice that the changes to divisions one and two will not occur? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. And if the board has a preference in maps, options one and two, for the changes that occur to three, four, and five, if we could identify that today, then we could come back essentially and be much closer to the goal the next time we meet.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with making a decision today on one and two, I agree with Director Aguilar that the changes in. I, I agree with Director Aguilar that the changes in the other divisions don't seem to be substantial. I'm not sure if I'm hearing from Director Bianco that it's super critical that perhaps we don't make those changes or if he just was trying to make a point that it needed, it didn't need to be that complicated. But I, I, I don't have a, an issue with moving forward today with one of these options. I think the, the only one thing that I wanted to point out is that, is when you look at the Division Five and you look at the area that I think was selected to increase population, there was that small area in Avenue Forty-eight versus the area, I think, around the Terolago portion of the map.
So which change would that be and which option?
An option, a map option number two, the population seems to come from the neighborhood that's adjacent to Avenue Forty-eight. And then on Option One, the change seems to come from north of the boundary around Avenue Forty-four. There's a big area that's added there that still remains in Option One. But it's a, it's, it's, there's no population there. So it's either coming from the Avenue Fifty-four area in Terolago or it's coming from the population on Avenue Forty-eight on Option Number Two. And the one thing that I wanted to just make a comment about, not that I'm weighing in too much on Option One or Not, or Option Two, and trying to get a sense of the frequency of when we get to do these revisions, whether we should also think about areas that have a potential for significant growth versus areas that are pretty much boxed in by full development? And the only reason I mention that is that in Option Number One, in the Terolago area, there seems to be a potential for a significant amount of growth versus on Option Number Two, you're completely confined within a fully developed area. So I, I just wanted to make that comment if it means anything. But again, I'm, I'm not, I'm okay with Option One or Option Two.
So I think as far as, and Jeremy may correct me on this, but the changes that we're considering today are based on the last census. So we make changes every ten years based on population changes. So we basically make the changes based on the population as the census reflects and don't really take into consideration future development until it actually occurs in the next census.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and then one last point?
I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I think you should go re, I mean, we have time. I think you should go and look at what I'm proposing. I, I don't, I don't like how it, I, I, I'm not comfortable with it. I think it's, it's too much moving around. You're given to, you're, I mean, someone's giving people, population over to, to one division and then someone else is in the same division is gaining more people. I mean, it's, it doesn't.
But I think that's Option Two where that happens, right? Where one district loses some people and gains some others. But I think Option One doesn't do that.
So Jeremy, if, if, if the Board wishes to, to do this in, in order to make changes only to Three, Four and Five, that would require a new map though, right? Come back in the next meeting. We wouldn't be able to approve a map that's not currently drawn, correct?
Exactly. It has to, so the final map has to be posted seven days before the meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we'd have to go back and redraw and then come back.
I mean, you could, just, just think, think about it. So in, in my division, okay, I'm giving people to Division One, okay? And then someone, and then Division Four is giving me people. So it's, it's more than.
I think that's Option Two.
Option Two.
Yeah, that's not happening in Option One. You're not.
I'm looking at map option one and it says, change number one, Division Two to Division One, and then change number four, Division Four to Division Two. So it's just, it's just, it's just so complicated. It seems like there's such an easier way to do this.
I see that in the recap. I don't see Division Four giving anybody to Division.
Looking at it right here on this map option number one.
There's, there's land, but there's no people.
Ten, eleven, twelve. So you want if you could put slide twelve up?
Yeah, there's no people.
It's the map option. Thank you.
Four gives some land to Two but no people in Option One.
No people.
So what, so why make the change?
So, so in, in, in Division Four, there's, there's no people there.
I don't know. It looks like a really straight line. Maybe that's why.
I mean, Division Four is in the middle of the valley.
So, so I can explain.
More comfortable if you went back and looked at it. It doesn't mean that we're, we, we, we wouldn't, we, we may, we may end up when it's all said and done with map option one or two. I just think you should go back and look at my suggestion of just taking people from Four and moving it to Three, some to Three and some to, and some to Five and.
I, I could go with either options, but I mean, to, to your point, if you'd like to take a look at it, I think we should look at it.
I'm okay. And if we're gonna look at it, then I'd rather not move the boundaries to, I think I'd rather go with the general manager's option of just eliminating the areas on the other divisions that are moving and just keep the boundaries as is as on, around option, around Division, I think, what is it, Four and Five?
Just take that one change off.
Yours, yours, from Four to Two? There's.
Well, there was, there was a comment by the general manager about still keeping the boundaries as shown in Option One or Two and just not making any changes to the other divisions.
Well, it's, I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke, but what I was basically getting from the conversation the Board was having was to strike any changes to Division One or Two and just look at balancing the need to move population from Four to Three and Five.
Which you don't achieve by the current.
Well, you, you achieve it by both of the current.
So you, you.
That's what I mean.
For what's on the screen, map option one, you would just eliminate that first move.
Correct.
Yeah. And then, and then there's a, I think, other moves that deal with One and Two that don't have any people in them.
Right. But if the Board doesn't want to do those, I, I.
I, I just don't, I don't see the point. I mean, you know, the, I'm guessing that, that if you look at map option one, you know, this, this Biscor Palms area, whatever it says on the map, there's no people there. I mean, it, it looks like it's just straightening out, straightening out the line is probably what somebody was thinking.
Right.
Right? Just go straight across instead of up and around.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. I mean, I, I, I think that Jim's suggestion in both options, one to change number one, the Sky Valley area, if there's, if there's no need to balance out District One and Two.
I can't get the different things I want to see simultaneously. Yeah, the only possible reason, and I don't know if this is the fact, but if you think that District One is growing, is gonna grow slower than the others, you know, you bump it up a little now so that they don't fall farther behind. I mean, clearly, right, District Four was the fastest growing area. So that's why it's giving up more people.
And which is fun, which is fun.
You know, I don't know if District One is gonna be a slower growing area going forward. I don't know.
But I heard that shouldn't be a consideration. Is that what I heard?
Correct.
Correct.
You make the changes based on the last.
Based on the last census, yeah.
I mean, while that may be true.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I pointed it out, but if it's not a point of consider, it's not a point of consider.
If they didn't look at it, I mean, who knows? But.
So what, what would it do to the population numbers? And I, I, I have no.
Probably nothing.
Opinion of this, but we, we.
Make much difference.
Change one on both options. What does that do to the population?
It'll still be acceptable.
I'm okay with that if, I'm okay with that.
Let the two directors.
I don't know. I mean, I, I feel like we're here, this looks, I'm fine with Option One. I, you know, I get, maybe you could do something else and I'd be fine with that too, but I'm ready to go. Having to redo it.
Well, we have to redo it.
Why do we have to redo it?
Because the map change that you would adopt would not include.
We're saying we're ready to go now.
We could just adopt my option, option one today.
You could adopt, you could adopt one of the two current options that you have available. If you're requesting any changes, we would have to go back and then come back and hold it.
I don't know that we're requesting changes. That, I think that's the conversation we're having.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm requesting changes. I, I don't, I don't understand why.
Oh, all right. I missed that.
It seems like a minor difference is, is why I just not getting.
It was twenty-five hundred people in, in all of Sky Valley. That's not a minor difference to me.
Okay. So they, and then they end up in District One.
Mostly minorities. I, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, but then they get, they get to vote earlier. I don't see how that's.
What do you mean they get to vote earlier?
Instead of waiting two more years to vote, they vote this year.
For a different division.
Right?
When.
Is, is that bad?
I, I believe it is. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm. I mean, Division, District Four is gonna lose a lot more people. A lot less.
Yeah, well, I have to.
They have to, they have to.
Division Four, I'm nine thousand over, over the.
He has to lose them.
Kind of the cap. So I get it. There's a scenario where he doesn't lose people.
No, I understand that. But he doesn't have to lose as many. He doesn't have to lose as many because the, the.
Well, I could, I could have the same argument. I mean, if he doesn't lose as many, then I don't gain as much, right? I mean, I could have the same argument, so.
It's not about who.
I don't know. I, you know, we're trying to, to meet the requirements of the law personally. I mean, maybe I get slightly more calls from people in my division, but I feel like I represent the whole district, not just my people. And, you know, the, the map one, let's just say map one, map option one gets us within compliance. I think they did a good job. You know, you, you could have done a little less of a good job, but I don't see why, you know? I, we didn't ask them to do a mediocre job. We asked them to do a good job. You know, we could, we could move as few people as possible and end up close to that ten percent number, but that's not what we asked them to do.
We, we asked them to, to get to.
I think they were trying to get the deviation as low as they could.
Right.
So you want a higher deviation?
What I mean, what?
It seems more fair. I mean, you're, you're gonna be more equal.
What do you mean more fair? We already have two minority divisions, don't we?
No, but I'm talking about the number of people.
We're having to redo, we're.
Look, if you have a ten percent deviation, that means you have a larger, larger difference between the number of people in a division and the ideal number, right?
You guys just don't want to wait another, what, month and a half to redo this thing, which I think it seems ridiculous, which, I mean.
We've got work to do, you know? I mean, so we're gonna bring it back to look at something that's gonna look a lot like the one we have in front of us right now. Slightly, slightly higher deviations.
Correct. With less movement, with less, with, with less voters being changed to a new director or a different time. So that number of people voting earlier and changing in different, in different divisions, that will be a lot less under what I'm talking about. There will be less people. So bring up that, 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 that list of how many people. It won't be that many people that are, that are changed.
Right. So instead of ten thousand, five hundred people changing, you're gonna have eight thousand people change. You'll have a higher deviation.
You'll have, you'll have more than that.
I, you know, I think that from just my personal opinion, it's, I think it's good that we get to the smallest deviation as possible just because we're not gonna get a chance to try to fix this again another ten years. So the, you know, the, the larger the deviation, it's just gonna get bigger ten years from now. So to me, it seems that the right thing to do is try to balance the total population across all the divisions as much as possible. It's only gonna get worse.
Do, do what you guys want. I mean, it's, I'm just telling you, it's.
You like hanging on to your people.
Well, why, I don't, I don't understand why we have to do this. It seems too complicated to me. It doesn't seem.
Well, I didn't love the idea of moving people out of one division and then other people into that same division, which.
I mean, you're making, you're making Division Two more white. You're taking minorities out. I mean, it's, it, it.
Am I, am I looking at a, a map that shows that? I don't know if I.
Option One, if you look at it, that, it should be what you have on your screen, shows the demographics of that as well, so by population.
I understand, but it doesn't show before and after on the demographics?
No, you kind of have to look, it's, you have to look at the two charts simultaneously and I don't know that we can do that.
I'm not sure that's really relevant anyways under the law. I mean.
It's not?
No, I mean, if you go from.
The whole idea is to have a, I mean, that's what they want.
All right. So, so do you.
I'll be right, I'll be right back.
You know, I don't know why we're even talking about this. Why? Okay. If, if we ask the lawyer, I mean, are we, are we violating some rule if we don't do that?
No.
No. So Jeremy, the goal, correct me if I'm wrong, is to preserve or create as many minority-majority districts as possible. We've done that here.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So I, I don't want to jump ahead of the Board, but it looks like we have two potential votes for one of the existing options.
Well, maybe three.
Yeah, I, I know, I've heard two.
So.
Not yet.
No, I think, let's see, let's put it up and if, and if it fails, then we have to come back with a new map, right?
Yes.
So, so if, if one were to make a motion, it would be to adopt Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Two-Dash-O-Nine with the insertion of map option one.
Let's do map, all right, so.
Get away from Peter.
Yeah, we'll wait for Director Nelson to come back. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve map one under Steph's recommendation.
Sue him to the resolution.
Under the, I'm sorry, under the resolution.
I'll second.
What was map, can you put up number seven again? What was it, slide five or seven?
Which, for existing or?
I want to see existing, yeah.
Uh, that's.
Oh, you have.
Yeah.
I can look at it on your screen.
So here's, here's option one demographics and here's existing.
Existing, right? Okay.
So you kind of have to jump up at the same time. If you want to see the changes.
Yeah. All right. So, so maybe not doing One and Two would, would make a higher deviation. It's hard to say. Yeah.
One up here, now you've got existing.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it. Okay. So just for recap, we have a motion in a second to approve the resolution with map option one while you're, while you're away.
Okay.
In case you weren't following. If we don't have any other discussion, we go to a vote and, and understanding that if the, if this fails, then we will have to come back with a new map and a new public hearing. Yeah, okay, gotcha. All right. So let's vote. Do we do a roll call vote here?
You don't need to, but if you'd like.
Why don't we do a roll call vote just so we know where we are?
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
No.
Director Aguilar?
Yes.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So that passed four oh, four, I'm sorry, four, four one.
Very much, Jeremy.
Yeah, thanks, Jeremy. I thought you guys did all right. I do appreciate the comments, the discussion. So.
Written, written comments.
We have, let's see, written communications, one was resolved, that's the only one. That's the only one I have, actually. Okay. Onto informational reports, and there's quite a few of these, so I don't know how detailed we want to get here. So.
We have guided staff to keep their comments to 10 to 15 minutes max.
10 to 15? Wow.
Max, so.
Three to five.
Six items, that's an hour and a half.
Two to three. Three to five.
Zoe, I know you can do it. Feel free to give alternative guidance.
Turn on the timer.
I know you can do it, Zoe. Come on up. So the first one is Sigma. Go ahead. The floor is yours, Zoe.
Thank you. So this is our annual update on conditions of the Mission Creek and Indio sub-basin as reported in the Sigma annual reports that will be submitted to the Department of Water Resources in by April 1st. I did want to provide a quick compliance update following all of the collaborative agencies' boards' adoption of the plans. They were submitted to the Department of Water Resources. They are under a DWR 75-day public review period scheduled to close on March 22nd. Do want to report to the board that based on a recent public information provided by DWR, it may be 12 to 24 months before we hear back with any comments on the alternative plan updates. So the presentation has been provided, and we will be doing a public hearing for, or pardon me, a public meeting for Indio sub-basin, and that is scheduled to occur on March 17 from 2 to 4 p.m. Part of the reason for presenting this item is to make sure that we're keeping the stakeholders abreast, but I'm going to go pretty quickly through this since we'll be providing that additional meeting collaboratively between agencies for the public. So in terms of water demand in the Indio sub-basin, we did see an increase this year of about 6% in terms of demand across all sectors, but I did want to put that into context. When we look at the annual variability over the last five years, we do see some years that are higher, some years that are lower. A lot of it is driven by local climate as well as other factors. So currently, if we look at that five-year average, we're at about 573,000 acre-feet demand across all sectors, which is about 3.5% lower than what we projected in the alternative plan update. I know this is a statistic that we received a lot of comments on, so I wanted to be able to provide that to you all. In terms of change in groundwater storage, we saw an increase of about 6,000 acre-feet. And when we look at that long-term annual change in storage that we show every year, we continue to see positive have seen positive trends since 2010. The 10-year average has been positive since 2017, and the 20-year has been hovering and approaching that balance of zero. I'm going to skip over the one-year change in storage and focus on the 2009. Just giving the board a heads up that in the future, we've because Department of Water Resources asked us to articulate how we're going to track sustainability and what metrics we'll begin comparing to that stable year of 2009. That's when the basin in general had its lowest storage. So similar story that we've been telling for several years now. Compared to 2009, the majority of the basin has seen increases in water levels and storage. We did, in terms of tracking sustainability objectives, we did assign a network of 57 wells where we'll be reporting, and those are what we call our key wells for tracking sustainability. Happy to report that for the Indio sub-basin, they're all currently above those minimum thresholds, which are the same as the measurable objectives. They were set the same for this basin.
Zoe, how did you establish the minimum threshold?
So the minimum threshold, first of all, we selected a network of 57 wells to ensure that there was good coverage of the basin and that we had a spatial coverage that was as even as possible, so as not to overweigh what was happening in one area, reminding the board that in terms of making sure that we're meeting sustainability objectives, we selected groundwater levels at their lowest level since there were no significant undesirable results at those levels. But if we went lower, then there was the potential for additional subsidence, et cetera. And then the other component of that is to truly reach undesirable conditions approximately where 25% of the wells would need to be below those 2009 levels for a five-year period, that longer time period being selected because of the location of, for example, recharge facilities, and that it does take some time to see the effects of management actions.
Okay, thanks.
So for Mission Creek sub-basin, there were nine key wells established. In terms of change in groundwater storage, we did see a decline of approximately 6,000 acre-feet. Recharge in water year 2021 was only 427 acre-feet. In terms of that longer-term change in storage, the 20-year remains hovering right around zero. In the last couple of years, we've had local drier hydrology and lower replenishment at the Mission Creek facility, so that 10-year has declined, but the 20-year, which is a good metric that captures enough dry and wet periods, remains right at balanced. And comparing to 2009, the majority of the basin has seen increases of up to 20 feet. In terms of key wells and sustainability objectives, nine wells, smaller basin, so it's a three-year period, and all of them are above their measure, all of them are above their minimum thresholds. One is below its measurable objective by about half a foot. We were clear to get enough coverage, we had to include a well that didn't have a long history, so we used a modeled number, and we were curious that this was provisional, so this is a number that we might look at in the future. But currently, again, we're meeting all of the sustainability objectives. You know, the summary here is the the plans keep working. We are meeting sustainability objectives set for each plan. As we see these cycles of drought followed by wet periods, it's clear that to maintain that 20-year average, you know, we need to keep the pedal on some of the replenishment projects that are planned, things like Oasis that will make full use of our Colorado River water, et cetera. So with that, I'm happy to turn the floor over to the next item or to the questions.
Yeah. Good, good. Thank you, Zoe.
I have one question. What's the difference between a minimum threshold and a measurable objective?
So I want to begin answering that question first by reminding everyone that we have an alternative plan and not necessarily a groundwater sustainability plan. So in a groundwater sustainability plan, the recommendation is to set a minimum threshold. That's how low you would allow yourself to go before recognizing that there would be significant undesirable results. And recall that a lot of folks in other areas are starting at their minimum thresholds or very close to those minimum thresholds, and a measurable objective is where you want to head within the 20-year period to ensure that there's no significant and undesirable results. When we turned in the alternative plans, each plan had either implicitly or otherwise set certain years as baselines. So for example, for the Indio sub-basin, the data was 2005, and we did see a few years of decline subsequently, so it felt like going to those lowest levels that we knew for sure without doing a lot of additional analysis. We had not seen significant undesirable results, felt like the right number. For Mission Creek 2009 was explicitly stated that that was the management goal. So that the difference there is that the minimum threshold versus the measurable objective gives you some operational flexibility, as well as for basins that are starting in an overdraft situation, giving them a place to go, what they're trying to manage to.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. President, I do have a member of the public online who would like to provide comment on this, so I will. Ms. Alena Kalamanis. I will allow her to speak.
Go ahead.
Ms. Kalamanis, you're online.
Can you hear me, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Alena Kalamanis, and I live in La Quinta. I believe that this presentation does not acknowledge enough that the groundwater increases are due to increases in allocation of the Colorado River for for our district. We already know that the three-state agreement is to keep 500,000 acre-feet from being released this coming year, and we also know that the SWP supplies are at zero, and I don't think that that's being fully acknowledged, that that we are in really dire situation with the amount of Colorado River water. And I also feel that if we take a look at the surf basins, there's an EPA formula that does a more thorough calculation of the evaporation for the surf basins, so that the we're under-calculated as things are right now. For the Storybook Living by Disney and for the Thermal Wave Basin, they're putting they're still talking about putting an additive, the developer into the water, and has that been analyzed by is it EPA approved this additive? And I'm seriously concerned that that we're not taking a look at it, and CVWD must take a leadership to understand what this secretive additive, proprietary additive they're going to be putting into the water to stop evaporation is going to be, because we need to make sure that we're not seriously impacting drinking water, because these people will be swimming in this water. So I believe that there's still a lot of work that needs to be done to take a look at evaporation for these to add in the extra amount of water that'll be taken out by all these four wave parks and beach resorts in the Coachella Valley, and that we really need to have you take a more leadership role in making sure that the cities are are really understanding what they can be doing to our groundwater by approving these evaporation-heavy projects. I want to thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you very much, Zoe. Any other commenters?
I do not see any other others with a raise yet.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I think that's it for this one, right? We're we're just informational? Thanks, Zoe. Next one is our state legislative look ahead. Good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So the next two items actually are legislative in nature, and so the first one is the state legislative look ahead by Chris Kahn Consulting. And at our last legislative committee meeting on January 27th, the committee decided that we should, you know, bring this full-year look ahead both state and federally to the larger board. So with that, I'll hand it over to Chris.
Thanks, Victoria. Okay.
Chris, you should be able you should have speaking privileges?
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Chris.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, President Powell, board members. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you briefly. I know about the upcoming legislative and budget year in Sacramento. Just very quickly, I provided a board report to you all, so I'll go through this quickly and happy to answer questions and double back on anything. But the legislature returned to start the 2022 legislative session on on January 3rd. This is the second year of the two-year session, so they immediately needed to dispense with bills from last year that had not yet passed out of their House of origin, the house they were introduced in. So that first month of January was really focused on that. A lot of bills, some bills passed, some bills stalled, and then a lot of those bills were reintroduced in February. Right after the legislature came back in, the governor released his his budget on January 10th. It's important to keep in mind that those budget numbers are going to change drastically. That budget was put to was basically put to bed in mid-December, so the impacts of the Omicron variant on the economy, the, you know, economic factors in general, the situation in the Ukraine, a lot of that, none of that was figured into this budget release and these budget numbers. The governor will submit a revision to that budget in mid-May, which will take into account all of those factors, as well as have the hard data from tax returns filed in April. So we do expect to see that change. But the, you know, just going off the budget that he did release and, you know, this budget is really kind of his vision for how the how the year is going to unfold. We're going to hear more of that tonight. He's doing his State of the State address tonight at 5:00 p.m., so we'll get a little more detail on the vision as the governor sees it going forward. The budget that he released on Jan. 10th projects a surplus of almost $46 billion. That with the surplus in last year's budget is is pretty historic figures that we really haven't seen in Sacramento. Of that money, 20 roughly 20 billion, he has tagged as discretionary funding. That's the legislature, and he will work on one-time funding for that $20 billion. The governor's budget also builds on last year's $5.2 billion three-year allocation to support drought response and long-term water sustainability. He's allocating an additional $750 million in this budget to that. These investments are slated to support and expand drinking water, mitigate drought damage to fish and wildlife. Investments will also support small farmers and ranchers and water system funding are facing a loss of water supply. We're part of an Aqua infrastructure group that is going to be working on that framework, but also looking to to make some changes. There's important pots of money, and I outline them in the report. But but this budget and last year's budget did not include funding for dam safety and very little funding for PFOS remediation relative to the total need. So those are areas that we're going to be looking to expand and and actually allocate, working working with with Aqua. And again, I have the I have those pots of money outlined in the board report, so I won't go through them right now, trying to keep to keep to the time. But but shifting back to the legislature, you know, as I mentioned, the bill introduction deadline was February 18th. We're looking at close to 4,000 bills and resolutions, new bills and bills carried over from last year that we're we're dealing with. Our overall tracking of those bills are in the hundreds. A lot of water bills have been introduced. Working with staff, we're looking to fine-tune that to a priority bill list that we'll be sharing with the legislative committee shortly, and those will really be the bills that, you know, we will focus on for the year. A lot of bills are still taking shape. A lot of spot bills were introduced, so we're going to see, you know, major amendments in the next few weeks. But just to really quickly walk you through kind of the the outline for the year, the first major deadline that we're facing in the legislature is the policy committee deadline for bills to get out of policy committee. That's April 29th. So you're really not going to see bills and committees meeting in earnest until later March, early April. The more controversial bills will be heard closer to that April 29th deadline for fiscal bills. It's May 6th for non-fiscal bills. May 20th is the last day for the fiscal committee, appropriations committee, to then pass bills to the floor, and May 27th is the last day for bills to pass out of the House of origin, the house they were introduced in. Then the bills will then repeat the process in the opposite house. June 15th is the deadline for the budget to pass. They will pass an initial budget by January 15th, or I'm July, sorry, June 15th. The governor will have until July 1st to to take action on that budget. The governor will have until July 1st to take action on that budget. I say an initial budget because of the, as the budget process has evolved over the years, especially with the change to a majority vote budget, we see the budget move into the end of session. So we'll see what we call budget bill juniors being done throughout the legislative year with trailer bills going into, going into the end of session, which is August 31st. July 1st is also the deadline for bills to pass out of the policy committee in the opposite house. The legislature will then go on their summer recess for a month, come back in August, and the month of August will be the final sprint of the legislative year, again, ending on August 31st. The governor will then have until September 30th to sign or veto the legislation that's passed in that last month, and then we turn to the general election, which is on November 8th. So finally, I just want to mention that we're going to be seeing a lot of action on the regulatory front this year. I think, as everyone knows, we're awaiting the release of, from the State Water Resources Control Board, of a MCL for Chromium 6. We've been told that it's coming out any day. We've heard that for quite a while now, but we have heard that the draft is done. Two good developments on that front, and we still have a long way to go, and we assume that this release will have some issues. However, they've agreed to do an administrative draft of the MCL for Chrome 6. The importance of that is that if they had done an official draft, that starts the regulatory clock. An administrative draft does not start that clock and allows for comment and potential changes, and it's a lot easier to get changes than an administrative draft than an official draft. So that's one good development. Another development that really happened over the interim is that, as you know, we were pushing a bill last year to require or put in statute a compliance period for any MCL, new MCL, and which would start with Chrome 6. We did that because the Water Board had told us that even if they wanted to do that, they don't have the statutory authority. So, but they've changed, they've changed their thinking on that. They now say that they do have the statutory authority to do that, so we expect to see a compliance period, hopefully workable compliance period, come out of this draft. If it doesn't, we still have the ability to go back to the legislature to try to get something, something in statute. And I'll just point out that we're also going to, we're expecting to see new MCLs for arsenic, PFAS, other things. The Water Board is also working on a new stormwater general construction permit that should be coming out very soon, so a lot's going to be happening on the regulatory front. So I'll conclude with that. You know, there's a lot of factors that are going to come into play in this 2022 legislative session. Hopefully, we'll be, you know, moving on from COVID, we're going to see, you know, major economic shifts in the economy, new legislative district lines, legislators who have announced they're not running for reelection, legislators facing term limits this year and in two years, and a primary and general election. So the dynamics are there for a very memorable year, to say the least. So I'll conclude with that and happy to answer any questions.
Chris, I have three quick questions for you regarding the workable compliance that the board is working on. So is there a plan that they would have that in place before they finalize any sort of working draft on the new MCL for Chromium 6? And then the other question is regarding the new MCL for the Chromium 6, do you have a sense what they're starting with? Are they going to, are they going to start at 10? Is that going to be open for debate, or are they going to put out a number? And then the third question is related to the surplus, how long do we have to try to get some projects in there?
Sure, thank you for the questions. When it comes to Chromium 6, we're really not going to know until we know, until this draft comes out, but again, the fact that it's a working draft, not an official draft, you know, is going to be helpful. They may not put a number out at all, I've heard that, but we're just not going to know until we know. But, you know, I do think that they will provide a compliance period in that draft that we're going to see, again, any day now, although we've been hearing any day for quite a long time. When it comes to projects, you know, I think, you know, I think it's going to depend on what that surplus number looks like when the governor puts out his May revision. We've already are in discussions with our projects. The way the process worked last year is, you know, as I said, the trailer bills kind of carried on past the budget deadline into August. We're guessing that's what's going to happen, so we really have up until, you know, the end of, the end of session, which again is August 31st, for those, for those projects to hopefully move forward.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
On to the feds.
Next, the feds, yeah.
Okay, next we have Anna Schwab and Lowry Crook with Best Best &amp; Krieger. So Anna and Lowry, I believe they have video, too. Thank you.
So I don't see a login for them. I'm guessing, are they, there's one DC Oval that I've been trying to communicate, but I don't see.
Might be them, they are signing in from the conference room, so it should be just one person.
So let's hope that that's them. Hi, Anna and Lowry, if you're online, can you unmute yourselves?
They did say that that is them, she did text.
Okay, there's a go.
Perfect.
Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
We can now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful, and can you see us?
You have no video, Anna.
Well, I don't want to take up too much time, so I apologize. We will just go by voice then, because I know, we just want to be brief and apologize about that. But, so, a few things, just looking at the federal side on the 2022 outlook, we are currently still actually working on the FY22 appropriations, which typically would have been done by September of last year for the fiscal year to have started on October 1. We are looking at that potentially coming out this today and then being voted on by the House as early as tomorrow, and then for the Senate to be considered by next week. Within that package, we are expecting to see the congressionally-directed spending items that the House had previously pushed through and that the House, and that the Senate was considering as well, and included within that is the water transmission project for the Eastern Coachella Valley that CVWD had put forward by Congressman Ruiz. So we will be keeping everyone apprised of that and as that develops as well. In the appropriation cycle, what we are seeing is that the FY23 appropriations will start very quickly after the FY22 is passed, as we are running about six to eight weeks behind. The president's budget typically would have been out in the beginning of February, so once we see everything kind of laid down after FY22, I would expect to see FY23 come out quickly. The big reason for us on that, that it's important, is that we see the, this is in conjunction with the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that recently passed, the bipartisan infrastructure law, and it goes also with the consideration of what was Build Back Better. We'll talk about Build Back Better in a second, but with the infrastructure bill and the FY23 appropriations, we see that there is a plethora of money that has been put into programs that CVWD focuses on and cares about, and the appropriation cycle will help bolster additional funds into that in addition of what was put in in the infrastructure bill. So we will continue to see that, we will continue to see that in coming out here shortly, and we'll keep you all posted. I want to pause there for a second and see, Larry, anything on Build Back Better we want to talk about and where that stands.
Oh, yes. Yesterday, Senator Schumer announced that he was planning to use the upcoming Democratic retreat this week to try to restart what used to be called Build Back Better that has some additional water funding, including a lot of additional stormwater funding. It's now not being called Build Back Better, it's, but what they're trying to, see if they can get through with Senator Manchin and Senator Sinema in the reconciliation process to get 50 votes, is now being framed as cutting costs for working families, and so the portions of what was Build Back Better that help with costs of either energy, we very much hope water and things like childcare will be repackaged along with some of the undoing of the 2017 tax cuts into a package, and they'll see if they can get 50 votes to coalesce. So that, we'll see that push coming in the coming weeks. In addition to that effort, there's, this year is the Annual Water Resources Development Act, two-year cycle. That typically is focused on authorizing both studies and projects for the Army Corps of Engineers. It starts in the House, generally focused just on the Army Corps of Engineers. The Senate tends to add broader water provisions and authorizations to it, and then, you know, we see what's left when the Senate and the House get together. But the delegations have been requesting proposals for that process, mostly focused on the Corps at this point, but that'll be just another thing going on in the world of water this year.
So one other thing on all that as well is in the Build Back Better, and one of the policy principles that CVWD has is regarding the water rebate tax and making sure that that is no longer a taxable event for customers within CVWD and everywhere who benefits from that program. And that is a provision in, or was a provision in Build Back Better. It is a standalone bill as well, and there is consideration for it to be included in one of these sub-p packages that Lowry was talking about and/or moved on its own separately. There is broad support for that to move forward, so on behalf of CVWD, we will continue working on that and ensure to update the board and staff on any movement. Lastly, and just very quickly, we just want to update everybody on the regulatory side as well. It's been a busy year already in terms of the regulatory side. We see a lot of action regarding PFOS happening. There is a proposed rule that will be coming out, we're expecting to see it this month from the Environmental Protection Agency on designating PFOWA and PFOS as hazardous substances under the Superfund Law of Circa. What that will mean is it will put joint and sever liability potentially on PFOS or PFOWA and PFOS. Lowry and I did have a meeting with the Office of Management and Budget with NWRA and Aqua as well, and shared some of the concerns that we know are out there regarding potential liability, and they're asking for special consideration for water, wastewater providers. So we will continue to keep you apprised of that, as well as a comment period as that comes open. And we also, Larry, do you want to talk about VODIS?
Yes, so the definition of waters of the United States that are protected by the Clean Water Act, Federal Clean Water Act, continues to be a moving target. The administration, after a court decision striking the Trump navigable waters protection rule that narrowed the scope of waters protected by Clean Water Act, a court in Arizona struck that down, and the administration announced that they would be applying the old 1986 standard for what's considered waters of the United States. Recently, the Supreme Court heard argument on a challenge to that standard, and we expect that the court, when it does rule, will probably narrow the permissible scope of protected waters narrower than what the EPA is applying right now. At the same time, the EPA and Army Corps of Engineers are in a process of trying to put their own definition of waters of the United States in place, so we'll continue to engage on that and make sure that we all understand what's regulated and whatnot as that moves.
So we're going to pause there. We know we went really quickly, but we did want to be very considerate of your time today, and we want to see if there are any questions, anything that you would like us as BBK to look into further or provide more information for, to the board, or anything else that we can answer for you today.
So I just, I just received an email from the congressman's office, and it says that the House is set to pass an appropriations package that will include community projects submitted by the congressman. They expect the package will pass the House this week. Did you touch on that? Is that, is that the, okay, well, then they must have been hearing or something. But, all right, so it sounds like it's all good, right? That's our.
Source.
All right, good, thank you.
All right.
And we, Director Estrada, we have that very much on our radar, and as soon as we see the package come out, we will be sure to update the district on where the community project funding requests stand and how that will proceed in the next step.
Thank you.
So let me just clarify.
And we are hearing from both House and Senate staff that the community project funding is going to stay in what's released today.
So under a continuing resolution, there's no authorization for new starts. We're under a continuing resolution now. You're expecting the Senate and House to both pass the budget appropriations and send to the White House for an approval by the end of this week?
Yes, so they have been negotiating the appropriations process since the deadline originally came up in September, and they've been going through these continuing resolutions. What they are looking at right now is not a continuing resolution, it's called an omnibus, which is basically one legislative vehicle for all 12 appropriations packages, and it would add or decrease funding levels as a traditional appropriations bill would for the remainder of the fiscal year.
And the current continuing resolution expires on Friday, so they are trying to get it done before the government shutdown. They also have a new sense of urgency because it contains an additional $12 billion to help with Ukraine, and so there's a bipartisan effort to get it done this week. It may, just because of the way the Senate moves, it may take until, slip a week until next week, but we don't expect it to go on any longer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you both for the presentation. Thanks, Victoria. What's next? Oh, portfolio review.
From the Finance Committee.
Yeah. Hi, Jeff.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, and I have the next three items. The next two items are on the investment results for 2021 for both the regular investment portfolio and our Section 115 trust for other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB. These are at the request of the Finance Committee, Vice President Estrada and Director Aguilar get regular quarterly deeper dives in the whole investment portfolio results, and they suggested at our last meeting last month that we start bringing to the full board an annual report of investment results, so that's why we're here today. I do want to point out that the two portfolios are very different in their construct. You just approved the updates to the investment policies for both, and they are very different policies because the rules and regulations that we adhere to on what can be invested in are very different for municipal investment portfolios versus Section 115 trusts. And however, both do adhere to the traditional three-part goals in order of safety, liquidity, and yield, otherwise known as return on investment. And that third one tends to be kind of a distant third goal for us, though we are very pleased with the performance that we have seen in both portfolios this past year. And turning to the first one, on the annual performance for the regular investment portfolio, you have the report in your packet as well as presentation, and Jason Schmidt from Chandler Asset Management is available to give a brief summary and/or answer questions as the board desires.
So Director Nelson, Director Bianco, as Jeff mentioned, you know, we take a deep dive into these about every month or so, and we did ask him to put together a deep dive into these about every month or so and we did ask them to put together a consolidated version of what we get to see throughout the year and just a quick snapshot of the performance over that year. I'm not sure if, if you said the consultants able to make that presentation?
They, they are available to do that. It's the, the-
So I'd, I'd leave it up to the directors to decide if you want to see that presentation or have you, you reviewed the PowerPoint, you're good?
Yeah, I've reviewed PowerPoint, it's very good, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the report.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we'll move to the next one.
Okay, well, the next one, I have the same basic comment. You have the presentation in your packet and Ellen Clark from PFM is available to give a presentation if you'd like it.
I'm gonna guess that the answer is the same.
Okay. So just, just for the benefit of the public, I'll just give a very high-level comment on my justification for my previous statement that they've done very well. So if you look in page 13 of the Chandler portfolio, you'll see where the investment performance is compared against both our benchmark or for a typical portfolio of this type and also against LEAF, which Local Agency Investment Fund, which is where 2,400 agencies throughout California had poured all of their money into that portfolio. And when you compare the performance against LEAF, we did about $2.5 million better than the LEAF portfolio.
How many bases, how many basis points?
It's, I can tell you. It's 68 basis points.
Oh, great, thanks.
And then compared to the benchmark, it's not as huge because it's a more typical type of portfolio with the Bank of America benchmark. It's only about seven basis points higher, but still that's over a quarter of a million dollars improvement. And then on OPEB, both the 12-month and the three-year returns have been outstanding. And, you know, the difference, big difference is that they get to invest in domestic and international stocks as well as real estate. We have very little in, in this, in the real estate arena, but just this past year, PFM garnered a $4 million increase in our portfolio. And over the last three years, that percentage increase was even stronger. So I think that's pretty good evidence to me that both firms are doing a good job managing our portfolios. So with that and unless there are any other questions, I'll move on to my third item.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay.
We're back up today, though.
Well, trying to go quickly to honor your request. So the third item is a, a brief update to our sanitation cost of service study. At the last presentation we gave to you at a board study session on February 15th, we presented preliminary results and the consultants' estimates of recommended rates over the next fives, five years. And at the March 22nd meeting, two weeks from now, staff will be asking you to approve the mailing of Prop 218 notices, which we signal as the board's willingness to move forward with the approval of the rate schedule for five years after the Prop 218 process. And that would be occurring at a meeting in May. So at, also at that study session, we kind of took the temperature of the board on how you were feeling about this before we brought back an approval item to you. And the indication was, well, we'll feel better if the numbers don't move much. So we did want to bring forward to you the final numbers that you will see in that report two weeks from now. And, and that is what is in your packet. We also have Eric Calocchia available. He's online from Nugent to give a brief report and/or answer any questions at the board.
Okay.
I'm all right with it. I, I went through it. I mean, it's not a huge change from the last time.
Correct.
Just in year one.
Just tiny, a tiny difference in year one, yeah. Pushing some things out, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with the report as it's included in the packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it remains to be seen what, which, which of those increases will actually get passed. But that's, that's-
Well, I've said repeatedly, we're threading the needle, doing the best we can to not load up and, and give overly conservative estimates for the benefit of staffs being able to-
No, I understand. And I think, you know, a lot of those projects are really critical to our, our management of-
They are, yeah.
Of our water, so.
So on, on the, just want to double check changes from the February 15th board session. These CIP revisions, those are going to change?
Those have been changed.
Those have been changed?
Yes.
So that's, that's a done deal, those have been changed?
Yes.
It's just, it's just a forecast, but, yeah.
And they've been all pushed out?
Yes.
Okay. That was good.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We have some action items then.
William.
And William. So, so this is for authorizing staff to proceed with option one for the Palm Desert replenishment project phase two?
Yes. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, audience and fellow staff. With me is William Patterson and brought him for reinforcements here to help me with this board action item. And yes, as you stated, our current request is to authorize staff to proceed with option one, which is to accept the current mitigation requirements, required mitigation fees, which will allow us to finalize the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit, which will then be able to finalize the California Regional Water Quality Control Board for one water quality permit, certification permit, then hopefully receive authorized infrastructure bids for construction once all permits have been obtained. Would you like a presentation or do you have a specific question associated with this request?
You know, so we're going to be putting water in, into impounded areas of the channel, right? That's, that is?
Correct. The, the project includes, you know, go ahead.
My, my, my question is, do we have any obligation to notify the surrounding residents of, I mean, obviously there's going to be some construction, but then there's also going to be ponds out there that weren't there before. What, what do we need to do in that regard?
Very good question. Thank you very much. You know, as we get closer to looking at the schedule, as we get closer to construction, we're going to see a lot more activity and of course, we're going to see a lot more visualness with the project, with people passing by and people are going to ask. Right now, we've been focused so much on acquiring our permits and that's been our angle. But once we have better clarity in regards to, okay, we now are moving forward and do have a path forward and we do recommend with option one, because that is the path forward to obtain these permits, then we'll get into notifying area residents in regards to this effort. Because yes, there is going to be ponds are very shallow in depth of water, but you know, there is a good neighbor policy that we have to inform the neighbors of this facility and that we are coming with construction, but then also let the residents know and also businesses and schools know that this could be a permitted facility with ponds also. So once we know, have a better clarity, long answer to your question is, once we have better clarity in regards to timing of the permits, yes, we're going to go into a public relations aspect.
Armando, why, why the big jump on the, on the mitigation?
You know, Director, so I've been asking myself so much, this one question. And I brought William here to help me support, but you know, it really comes down to the Army Corps of Engineers and how they interpret and how they see the project and how we see that project. Our initial swath was that we was going to be a mitigation requirement about two acres. After many years, a lot of effort, a lot of painful meetings with them, a lot of technical memos to them, a lot of revisions of applications, a lot of data-driven conversations, they came back with 23.6. There's, there is a difference there in regards to how the Army Corps regulations policies are determined and the total project impact according to them is 23.6 acres. We initially thought it was two. That has a huge cost component. We also thought that we were able to mitigate that 23.6 acres by providing some land that we own through the Coachella Valley Multiple Habitat Comfort Innovation Plan. This area we own about 66 acres. We thought, okay, great, they want 23, you got 66, no problem. But then the way they interpret that use of that land, we only got credit for about five acres. And so we, I have, we highlighted that option two, we continue to negotiate, but there is some real loss associated with continuing to negotiate on that front because there is the use of canal water that we're not doing or Colorado River water that we're not using or utilizing. But also there's a loss of replenishment. If we would just put a $500 budget to that and it's 15,000 acre feet of replenishment per year, that's a $7 million loss in regards to cost that we're not able to replenish or that, that has financial aspects. But back to your original question, it's, it's just the rigidity in regards to the Army Corps of Engineers interpretation of how they see this project. We thought it was two and they're thinking it's 23.6.
Yeah, unfortunately, in this particular case, the staff does have the option of trying to go back and renegotiate. We just don't think we'll be successful and we have spent a lot of time and effort on this now. There's no guarantee that the Army Corps of Engineer will, will change their mind based on the discussions we've already had. So I would, it's been my recommendation to staff to support that we go ahead and move forward with this, recognizing it's not a great deal, but the project is very important to the district. And we have essentially got to a point where we can obtain the final permits, right? So that, you know, there is one more step that is contingent upon us getting through this wicket before we can actually say we've got all our permits.
Right.
What's the next 4.7 million dollar wicket?
We don't know that, what the cost is yet, but it involves another regulatory agency that's more local.
But we have a good idea, I think, with the next wicket is the Regional Water Quality Control Board and that has a cost of, you know, somewhere in the 100, $200,000 effort.
I, I don't feel comfortable with this, to tell you the truth, with the extra $4 million and the way we're going and, I mean, I think we're better off waiting. I mean, this project's getting kind of out of hand. Maybe there, maybe we need to analyze where we, we need to use that water, which would maybe make more sense economically. I, I don't know, it just seems like we're forcing something.
You know, on the, I mean, that's a good question, but I know when we first envisioned this part of the project, the cost was extremely low compared to our, our alternatives, you know? And in other words, direct recharge versus in lieu, the direct is cheaper, a lot cheaper because it's already there. But, but this changes the calculation, right? I mean, have we relooked at that to see if it still makes sense?
You know, from, from the project economics, it's, it definitely makes sense because the, you couldn't pick a better site. We, we have the Mid Valley Pacman there. We have the area that we owned and we have an ability to create berms very easily by moving the existing sand. So in regards to, yes, it is a big number. It's, it's $4.6 million. But it's still, it is a good project to do when you look at the cost of doing 15,000 acre feet a year. That's, that's inexpensive when you look at those-
But we already have, we are, we're already, we have current replenishment ponds already there.
This increases the capacity.
I understand. So it's not like we're, we're, we don't have any. I mean, we're, we are replenishing that area right now currently.
Right.
This is an increase.
Correct. And if the board recalls when Zoe was providing her summary discussion of the Indio Sub Basin Groundwater Management Plan, there are still some areas in the Mid Valley, specifically a little further north, that are not yet performing as well as they should be covering groundwater levels. And it was the expectation that by increasing our Mid Valley replenishment, we have a chance of bettering those conditions.
So review, review for me again, please, the funding for this?
Thank you. So we have proposed in our five-year budget for FY23, 5.3 million, 9.6 million and 1.8 on 2025 to be funded with the REST RAC fund. In addition to that, because of the offset fee, there is a contribution that we can draw from, from the supplemental water supply charge funds. And we worked very hard so that we looked at the sanitation cost of service fee and we tried to make sure that we saved enough of the supplemental water supply charge so that we can contribute some funds to this project from that.
So, so does this project cost get rolled into the, the, the new fee structure that we talked about earlier?
Correct.
How much is coming from that?
We are estimating somewhere between 5.5 and 6. And here you-
That's not the total, though.
No, that's not the total.
So, so to answer your question, Director Aguilar, no, it doesn't get, it's not part of the sanitation cost of service study. This project is coming, it's budgeted in the West Replenishment Fund. Currently, it's budgeted for around 11-ish, 11, 12 million. With the increase of these fees, it, it increases it to about 17. But there's also a component where we're putting slope protection along the banks just south of Warp 10. So that $2 million or so is coming from the Stormwater Fund. Okay, so what we're looking at is the sanitation cost of service study funds are in lieu recharge projects, are non-playable water projects. So we've applied 15 million of the supplemental water supply charge to that cost of service study in order to keep that rate at the eight and a half percent. So we have 27 million in this fund, which is, you know, a one-time fund, basically it's not getting replenished. basically, it's not getting replenished. So, fifteen from twenty-seven is twelve. So, we have, we can apply up to twelve million to this project, because it's a replenishment project, it has the same goal as an in lieu replenishment project.
Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
It says seventeen point nine million. Is that seventeen point nine million for the total project plus two million for the concrete, no matter where it's coming from? Or is it?
It's included, the two million's included in the seventeen million. And that's coming out of stormwater.
And then you said you still have twelve million available to throw into the fifteen million?
Right, and plus, we have budgeted the project in the West Replenishment Fund for eleven million, and that was included in the cost of service study that we did a year ago for West replenishment. So, so I guess, you know, there, there wouldn't be a need to change that cost of service study.
What's another potential project other than this one that would be able to tap into that twelve million that's remaining? Is it the non potable pipelines?
Yeah, it's any in lieu recharge or recharge project, anything that is either putting water in the ground or keeping the water in the ground so that we have more available groundwater for potable use.
I, I was, I, I'm sorry, but I wasn't following your savings, the calculation in the seven point five million?
Oh.
How to use, yeah.
So, we're, we're estimating putting fifteen thousand acre foot of water annually in the ponds, and we're saying its approximate value is five hundred, a dollar's breaker foot. So, that's seven and a half million dollar value of, of water annually. We, currently, our, our fees with the Army Corps are around five million. If we go back and negotiate, we might be able to reduce it a little, but we don't think we have a great chance, but let's just say we could reduce it a million dollars. Well, it doesn't really offset the seven and a half million that we're not taking advantage of annually by putting that water in the ground.
But are we, so are we losing revenue? I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking, I'm trying to figure out how we, how we save that money by replenishing by versus not replenishing.
Looking at it from a, a value of water aspect.
But we still keep the water, right? It's still, where's it, I mean, do we lose it?
This is the underrun.
Right.
That we're trying, you know, the, the board has asked us to develop a plan that fully utilizes our Colorado River allocation, our QSA water, our state water project water, and so this goes a long way to accomplishing that goal.
Up until today, we, we haven't, that water's being purchased?
We have an agreement with Metropolitan to support the QSA delivery schedule as it was negotiated.
The ramp up.
So, yes, the underrun is purchased by Metropolitan.
Okay, so then, we're not losing revenue, but we're just trying to make sure that we put ourselves in a better position?
We're trying to fully utilize the Colorado River water deliveries that we obtained.
To support the alternative plan, our water management plan, to support.
Sure, I get it, I get it, but, 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 we're not loo, we have the revenue up until today, right? I mean, I think that's what I'm asking.
If we don't use the water, there is a potential we will lose it.
Yeah, but up until today, we, we're not losing revenue.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's, comes down to, are you more concerned about the revenue or the water? We're concerned about the water.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I mean, my goal would be to use that underrun as we plan to sooner rather than later, you know, but looking at, I kind of did the calculation a little differently.
Okay.
Let's say we're trying to decide between option one and option two, and optimistically, you know, there's a, there probably isn't, you said one million difference, I mean, let's say there's a four million dollar difference, let's say we have a miracle and we don't have to pay the, the four million dollars. If you, if it takes you a couple of years to get there, you're going to not put that fifteen thousand acre feet of water into the ground for two years. So, there's thirty thousand acre feet of water in an attempt to, to reduce this by four million, even though you're not going to get the whole four million, that's a hundred and thirty-three dollars an acre foot at four million dollars. And, you know, which is, which is a fairly low number when you look at putting water in the ground, in, in my view. And we're a lot higher than that up north in, in white water.
So, I have a, I have a question. This is, this is a, I mean, look at it right here, it's a bare, bare channel, there's no vegetation there, it's all cleaned out. What exactly are we mitigating?
That's a good question, it sounds like.
We're mitigating what the Corps of Engineers has told us is our responsibility. I don't know that there, we have a whole lot more detail than that.
So, what, what, what are we going to do with, I mean, so it looks like the methodology is not two acres, but twenty-three point six. What are we doing on the twenty-three point six acres?
Well, the bottom, the bed of the channel is jurisdictional, it's waters of the US, even though it's ephemeral. And the permanent impacts from the project that the Corps has determined need to be mitigated are the building of the berms and some site slope impacts, which is about one point nine two acres, which is what we originally thought needed to be mitigated as a traditional discharge of into waters of the US. The Corps then came back after years of discussion about quantifying the permanent impacts from this project, determined that the inundation, the areas of the channel that are flooded with water is a permanent impact. And that was a little bit subjective because of some of the language in determining what a permanent impact is. And after years of trying to come up with a method to measure and quantify and to have post-project monitoring that could lead to mitigation that we would be unaware of at the time we built the project, we needed some certainty. And CBWD chose the, an approach to determine that those are permanent impacts and to show that they were mitigated for with our approach of conserving land in the watershed and property that we already owned. So, what has transpired is that the Corps does not value the preservation of the parcel that we proposed like CBWD does. CBWD compares the, we went through multiple assessments to compare the, the condition of the channel that we would be building this project in versus the site that we were proposing to conserve. And we thought that that had equivalence value in our favor of about, you know, three to four to one. When they came back with their response to our proposal, they disagreed. And at the Corps, they're, they have a preference to not support preservation-only type projects because of their no net loss policy. So, they came back with a ratio of like twelve to thirteen to one, so we got much less credit for that preservation parcel. And our approach to be out of preservation only was to supplement any remaining mitigation with the purchase of in lieu fee credits. And where we had originally planned for one acre credit, in lieu fee credit to be purchased to supplement the sixty-six acre parcel conservation, they came back and said that that was not nearly enough. Twenty times the cost is what, over twenty times the cost is what they came back with on us, and let us know that they weren't very supportive of the preservation approach. A lot of this has to do with, we're on our fifth project manager at the Corps. And a lot of this is subjective and, you know, requires staff interpretation to give guidance to us on the project. So, you know, we feel like this is the fastest route for CBWD to get a permit for this project is going to be to accept some of these high costs, about five million dollars.
So, that's not a good answer, but it's the answer, right? So, it's, it's just a shame that the, the federal government and the Army Corps of Engineer is stealing out of the pockets of the ratepayers five million dollars to do nothing. I mean, it's not, it's just nothing. What are they going to do with the five million dollars? I mean, I guess, I guess, would we just give them a check of four point six three nine seven three three million? What do they do with that money?
So, the in lieu fee credit purchase is the purchase of acre credits into a bank. That bank is the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission in lieu fee program bank. And what they do is they build restoration in the watershed to offset impacts in the watershed. They have an instrument, instrument with the Army Corps that allows them to sell so many credits for their, for their plant. And that's about, you know, it's a, they have fifty acre credits available for purchase, and they sell them at different rates, about two hundred twenty-four thousand.
Who's the group again that does the projects?
Coachella Valley Conservation Commission.
So, they're going to build?
Administrators of the CBWD.
They're going to build habitat to, to buy, to make up for, you said build, though, it didn't say buy, you said build.
Yeah, because we're going to buy, we're going to buy the mitigation credits, and they're going to use that money to go build something that, that is some in-stream.
They, they have a habitat restoration plan for some, a couple parcels in the Delta Conservation Area down near Johnson Street.
So, so aren't we building habitat? I mean, that, whatever the heck they build down by Johnson, isn't the bird going to be just as happy going to this one over here that we're building? I mean, we're putting in a pond which makes birds happy, you know, I mean, there's a lot of birds around there. You look at all the birds that hang out at Warp Ten, they're going to be able to go over here now.
Yeah.
Why, why would they go to Johnson Street? I don't get it. Why would we pay them five million to go over there when they can go here?
They'll hear shotguns down there.
Not just birds.
Next to the deck.
Does that make any sense? So.
I think what you're talking about is, is two different things, that the CBMS HCP mitigation obligations that we have, we're building projects and we have those plans.
Do we get credits for our birds at Warp Ten? They're thriving, I mean, really, I'm not kidding, they're.
And we're four?
Yeah, I, I have another question that, that concerns, is that, you know, what, four or five years ago, and this project, or six years ago, it was, I'm, I'm all over this project, but, but now, since, you know, things have changed a little bit, I, I'm worried that, that we may not, there may be cuts to Colorado River water, okay? And that we have a project that, you know, the, the first cuts to the desert would be to replenishment, right? That's what we have planned, and that we're going to build this and maybe not have the water to put into it in the long run, and that, wouldn't we use, and if, if that's a reality, cuts to the Colorado River in the future, then wouldn't the cuts come out of the underrun first?
Well, we don't want to have an underrun, that's the whole problem.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we, we may, we may face some management decisions going forward, and, you know, we might have some conservation programs here and there, but this is, this project in my mind is addressing one of the highest overdraft areas in the valley. We've got, when you look at either the subsidence or the water level drops, this area is, you know, kind of ground zero for us, and it's when you look at, you know, Levy's down to the south and, and White Waters basins are up to the north, and this middle area is really a depression in, caused by our pumping. And, and, you know, I can't, I can't really argue against the project. I mean, as much as I'm going to complain about this extortion to, on this project, because there's nothing to mitigate here. I mean, there's just no mitigation here. It's, 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 someone's getting money to fund their program somewhere else, and it just makes no sense to me. But, but the project makes sense, and, I don't know, I, I don't like it at all, but I'm willing to move the, the project forward with the, with the four point six million dollars of Mordiwa. Because this is an important project, and this is an area in our valley that is really depressed on our pumping.
But don't we have, don't we have golf courses in, in, in the area where, where it's depressed? You know, Marriott Desert Springs, where we could hook those golf courses up and accelerate them and, and get them done to make sure that, that we, we're, we're.
Fifteen thousand acre feet is a lot of golf courses.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I, I understand, but you know, this, this, there's, there's no paying, there's no.
One golf course might cost you four million.
There's no paying customers for this, there's no paying customers for recharge, okay? That there's, and if, and if we're, we're going to spend all this money, you know, at least golf courses, there's, there's a paying customer, I'm worried that, you know, ten, twenty years down the road, we're going to have severe, there's an outwater cuts, and the first cuts we're going to take is go, the first cuts to the Coachella Valley is going to be recharge, correct? That, that is, that is in our books.
That, that's the plan.
That's the plan, okay. So, so when that's the plan, we have, we have something that, I'm just saying we maybe need to, to look at this thing.
You may, you may, but, but we also, you know, the hole is, is right, this is where, this, you know, we're, we're doing pretty well in the East Valley in terms of well levels, and when that Oasis project gets wet water on it, you know, by the end of this year, hopefully, most likely, the first cut's going to be at Levy, not here. I think this is a, this would be a higher priority area in terms of water management, in my view, because of that, because it's so far away from all the other replenishment areas. And that's a board decision later, it's not, that's not been decided yet.
I just think that, that the, the plan that we had five years ago is, may, may, maybe changed a little bit, so.
You know, I mean, if you.
I'll get, now's our chance to change it all, even though we do, we do have recharge there already, it's not like we haven't put anything in the ground, I mean, we, we are recharging right now there. I mean, it's.
Yeah, but it's not enough.
Phase one does how much?
Ten thousand.
And phase two will do?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. You know, if you look at, let's say it's, it's three million dollars of extortion, because you're not going to get out of this for zero.
Yeah.
You know, at, at fifteen, over thirty years, you know, it's, 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 at fifteen thousand acre feet, I'm.
As, as we've seen at Levy, there is tremendous amount of money that, that, that takes, that you need to maintain these, okay? And, you know, at, at Levy, we're spending millions of dollars to, to, to change, move the dirt around because it doesn't, it doesn't go down fast enough and, and, and all of these things. We've spent a lot, millions. We're going to do the same thing here. We're going to do the same thing here over time, it's going to cost a lot of money.
I mean, over twenty years, that's ten bucks an acre foot for three million, which is taking a cheap project and making it ten dollars more expensive.
That's if you have the water.
Yeah, I think you're going to have water. I think your risk of losing water is much higher if you don't build this thing. And it, or if we wait, I mean, that, that time, the time, the timing is a big deal, you know, now is, now is a lot better than eighteen months from now.
Is your mic on, Dan? Sorry, thank you.
Maintenance required in the Thomas E. Levy because of the pump station and things, we already have the pipeline here to Armando's point, but when you take thirty-five thousand acre feet or thirty-seven thousand acre feet at Thomas E. Levy, it's about ten dollars an acre foot to maintain that. So, our payments to the contract, we have a contractor that does it, it's three hundred and seventy thousand acre feet, so ten dollars. If you take this over time, as he alluded to, fifteen thousand acre feet over thirty years is four hundred and. years is four hundred fifty thousand acre feet. It's ten dollars an acre foot for this, you know, contribution to the environmental. But the maintenance, again, there's a fixed component upfront that's very expensive, but the maintenance over time is miniscule to build two or three-foot ponds, three-foot ponds, three three-foot ponds, it's it's almost negligible except in a big flooding event.
Didn't we just spend two million dollars at the Levy facility just to move the dirt around again? Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
We we spent, we have a.
We didn't, we.
It's a five-year, it's a five-year contract. So we signed a five-year contract with Demo Unlimited and it's about three hundred seventy thousand a year and it actually includes the phase one. And I guess Steve's point also is, and Director Nelson's, is this COVID, there's there's, the low points are in the colds. So to get water in the South Palm Desert area, this is our best ability and the long-term maintenance is miniscule. So there's a high fee upfront for the fixed cost, including the mitigation. But once we're there, we have the asset here, there will be, this is a once-in-a-lifetime chance to get this and then the long-term maintenance is miniscule, in my opinion.
And I might mention that, you know, part of the work we've been doing the last three years working on this permit was an alternatives analysis to, of why the project needs to be here. And it directly relates to the U S G S subsidence studies that have been going on. So Peter, you're right on this site. And remember, we have another objective, which is to recycle all the water from Warp Ten. That means we're moving inflows away from this area to go to golf courses out in further, further from this area. Those inflows that are currently happening are not going to be happening in the future at this location. So the project site is is ideally suited for that Palm Desert, Indian Wells subsidence area that we still have. We're addressing the La Quinta one. Remember, there were these two locations where they saw these focused areas of subsidence, not a lot relative to what you see in the Central Valley and other areas. But that's where it's occurring in the valley and this project helps address this site.
So Armando, I see you brought a few other reinforcements besides Williams.
Yes, I, this, this was a hard project. I really appreciate all the comments. It's it's not easy, but we are dealing with Army Corps of Engineers, which is sometimes very hard. And I just wanna make a point to clarify, I made a mistake. It's seventeen million dollars for the Palm Desert replenishment plus two million dollars for the. Twelve, for a total of nineteen. I'm sorry about that.
You mean twenty? Because it's seventeen point nine plus two.
Plus two.
So it's so it's almost twenty?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Right?
Correct.
So another, this also ties to the WOTIS information that you received earlier today.
Right.
That miracle that we had went away with this administration. So we pursued, because there was a period of time under the previous administration, this area of the channel was no longer U S waters. We pursued permitting under that approach and it evaporated with the new rules that came in with the new administration. So there is no miracle four million dollar reduction that's gonna happen in the next two years. We're not.
No, I know. And and here they are debating this cutting costs for working families and then they're doing nonsense like this. It's just wrong because this is gonna drive up people's rates.
Yep. So have you built into these numbers, I mean, costs are going up, they're crazy. So how have you done that and what kind of accommodation in the budget? Have you incorporated that? And tell me again when you're seeing construction start.
So we anticipate if we can get a green light on option one, the best possible timeline is to start construction sometime in the summer of twenty twenty-three. We have looked at the cost again, tried to look at, you know, are we right in line with the market that is happening now? We have adjusted some on the the cost that we have so that we can arrive at that twenty million dollar figure, so that we can anticipate that we'll be right where we think we are. We'll take another look once we get closer to when we know what the permitting is, to look at that estimate once again, but we we have looked at that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, are we ready to take action?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of action item ten A, authorize the staff to proceed with option one for the Palm Desert groundwater replenishment project phase two.
I'll second that.
Okay, good. So there's a motion and a second to prove this with option one. Any other discussion before we? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so that passed four one, I believe.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Armando. Somebody needs to watch over how they spend that money, too. C V C C, is that the group? Who's who oversees that?
I'm on that one.
Okay. See how they spend that money.
See how they spend.
Thank you.
This is terrible. Ten B. North Shore Water Main Replacement.
Good morning. I'm here today to request authorization to go out to bid for two projects located in the East Valley. The first one is in Mecca. We call that the Dale Kyler Water Main Replacement Project, named after the major street. It runs north-south. The second project is in North Shore, the North Shore Water Main Replacements, which is on the second map. Let's see if I can, there we go. So we've been working on this project for probably about two years now. We have plans completed. We have our application finally completed through the U S D A. U S D A currently is processing that application. We hope to get their approval for a loan within the next three months, maybe four months, depending on how quickly they can move on that. And so with that, we're requesting authorization to go out to bid. We wouldn't go out to bid until we receive that funding agreement. And we would bring that funding agreement and a contract for the board's approval at that time, again, roughly after about four months or so. The total project cost for both of these would be about nineteen, about nineteen million dollars, about eight point eight million for the North Shore project and ten million for the Dale Kyler project. So the Dale Kyler project in Mecca has had issues with pipe failures due to corrosion of that pipe, ductile iron pipe, there's high groundwater, very corrosive soils. We did a study back in twenty sixteen that identified that issue. The the North Shore project has has a different concern. The pipes running north-south in that main street that you can see is is a is a four-inch and six-inch pipe, hard to fill up that reservoir that serves that area. So this project would upsize those pipes and help improve pressure, fire flows and the ability to fill up that reservoir, which that water flows down through Mecca, down into this area. So that is my brief presentation. Oh, well, let me add the the financing component. Part of U S D A's loan requirement is to have interim financing. So what that means is U S D A won't fund the project until after construction is completed. So during construction, as we're making progress payments to our contractor, we need to have interim financing secured. Our finance group has already secured that financing through a three-year note. The details are in your board packet. So once we're done with the construction, U S D A would fund, fund the project, we would pay off that short-term note. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Then the the loan is for the total of both projects?
Correct. There there's other projects within that application, but for right now, it's just those two.
Okay, thank you. And we've been working on this for how long now?
Pre-COVID?
Okay.
So what is that? Two years?
Two years.
Two years plus.
Yeah, this is a, this is a solicitation of bid request.
Correct.
And and then the is, so is the loan and so forth, is or the payments on the loan, is that included in the capital improvement budget?
It is.
Yeah, okay. I'd move approval.
Second.
And the interest on the short-term loan is also recoverable through U S D A, correct?
The interim financing costs are not recoverable.
They're pretty low. Right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passed five oh.
Thank you.
That was quick.
And.
It was less than five minutes.
Okay, Robert, back to sites.
Yes, sir. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. I will try to make this as short as I possibly can.
Is it just me or am I seeing a lot more press favorable to sites?
No, I don't think it's just you, sir. I think there really are. Yeah, there's a lot more interest in this and I know there's the matter of W F I of consideration, which, you know, hopefully there'll be some good news, you know, coming out in the next few weeks or so. But anyways, I guess before I get started, I want to acknowledge that Jerry Brown, the executive director for the Sites Authority, is on the call today and he's available to answer any any questions that I'm not able to to answer or, you know, if there's a deeper dive that you like. But for the interest of time, I'll try to skim through this fairly quickly. I think all the information is contained in your board packet. So the requested actions are threefold. The first one is to authorize general manager to execute the third amendment to the phase two agreement, which we entered into in twenty nineteen. And then there's a funny ask, expenditures not to exceed four million for the next two years or so. So the breakdown are as follows, for twenty twenty-two is one million and then twenty twenty-three is one point four and one point six for two twenty-four. I will preface my comments by saying that these costs have been baked in into last year's study, budget studies. So as a result of that, there will be no anticipated increase that's necessary to cover, you know, these these additional planning costs. And then the final item is to make determination that these actions that the board is considering are exempt from CECL. And this is just a pretty standard request. So I'll cover this very quickly, project benefits. I think the board already knows, this was always always kind of contemplated as a part of the state water project. And I think the important thing is to realize this is a dry year water supply that's capturing, you know, additional runoff during wet years for release during those dry times, that's what we're experiencing now. The current status of sites participation, we have twenty-three reservoir committee members comprising of cities and counties as well as entities north and south of the delta. There's quite a few Sac Valley participants. So if you're gonna take a look and see how many state water contractors are participating, there'd be a total of nine. So there's a total of twenty-seven state water contractors. So four-third of the membership are bought into this project. I think another impressive thing about this is, you know, the last two or three years on the state water project has been pretty dismal in terms of releases. And I think this panel on the lower left, right-hand side came out of, I think it was a Metropolitan Presentation, and they estimated that there'd be additional one million acre foot additional water in twenty twenty-one for release, available for releases if sites was in operations.
Are they saying that we would have collected that much or retained that much water from twenty twenty-one?
No, I think what they're saying is that there will be, you know, unfavorable conditions. There'd be one million acre feet of water potential available for release because this is one point five million.
Water that would have been collected in prior years.
Yes, sir, that's exactly right. And, you know, Jerry's online, so, you know, he can certainly correct me if, you know, if that's not the the understanding. But yeah, so, you know, bear in mind, last year, we only got about two hundred thousand acre feet, you know, from the state water project system because it's a four mil, I'm sorry, a five percent year. So this would have been huge. So the need for sites, I think we, you know, the board has seen this enough times, but it was really to kind of bolster the the reductions in the reliability that we have been getting off our Table A. And the reason why we, the C V W D went in for state water project supplies in the first place is there are simply certain areas in our service area that are not allowed or we're not able to get Colorado River water. So, you know, with the reduction, you can see, you know, from this graphic, pretty simple, it's about half, you know, we're getting about half the Table A reliability as we were pre-wanger. So and other water supplies I put in here just for context, they're not, you know, there's reductions and there's, you know, risks, you know, to those as well. So I think, you know, when you talk about generational projects, sites, you know, certainly is one of those that I think the board has the wisdom to allow, you know, allow us to participate. So on the project evolution, just very, very quickly, we entered into this project back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen timeframe. At that time, it was contemplated as a one point eight million acre feet reservoir at a cost of five point two billion. Since then, the project has gone through a bit of revision to, I would say, quote-unquote, right-size it. Now it's a one point five billion acre feet reservoir at about three point nine billion dollars. I think the important thing to note here is that the project is almost nearly completely subscribed by now, so there are no empty blocks of water, if you will, back as it was back in twenty seventeen. Construction is slated to start after twenty twenty-five and then with the first deliveries of water after twenty thirty-two, so really, literally ten years from now. So there's a lot of work to be done between now and then. So I think the board has already seen this before, but just to reiterate how we actually use sites, this is dry year supply. So in wet years, the state water project releases from Orville, goes through the Delta Tunnel Project, which the board authorized our participation back a month ago. The water gets exchanged with Metropolitan. And then during really wet years, the waters, because Metropolitan can't take it all, would go into storage programs or fill in sites. During dry years, I think the opposite actually happens. So we would actually be drawing off the storage programs and be drawing off the sites to fulfill any unneeded demand or, yeah. By phases, so I go through this very, very quickly. We've been in this project since day one, so phase one, phase two, which we find ourselves in, these are sort of like the monetary commitments. The big change right now between our current requests and what the board saw previously is that, I think about a year or two ago, when I came to board last for for phase two funding, I think the project was envisioned to be in neighborhood of like three billion dollars or a little bit over three billion. Now it's escalated to almost three point nine billion and I will give reasons for why that is as we go on. So our participation in sites, we entered into this project back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, our commitment was for twenty-six thousand five hundred acre feet. The board authorized expenditures of up to one point one million dollars for planning efforts and also to get Prop One funding. Since then, we've actually rebalanced down to ten thousand acre feet, you know, because our participation in the Delta Conveyance Project. And the board, up to date, has authorized expenditures of a little bit north of two point six million. So what we're asking for is funding today for four million to finish out phase two. And then phase three will be come back to board for additional funding once we break dirt in twenty twenty-five. So amendment two, progress. So during this time, okay, what has our dollars, you know, bought us? So the work efforts for sites has centered on these five key areas in order to make the groundbreaking and construction as successful as it can be. So we filed for a water rights application with the state board. We've gone through a biological assessment, prep, prep the the application for biological assessment, and this is gonna be done in conjunction with reclamation. There's section one oh six agreement, which is the historic preservation side of the business and consultations. And so then it'll take permit, basically that's an operational permit to take, for take of endangered species and that's being conducted right now through Department of Fish and Wildlife on the state level. The Clean Water Act, the four oh four and four oh one permit, is through the Army Corps of Engineers for dredging activities during construction. So those are five key areas and I know I'm going through this fairly quickly, so please do, you know, slow me down if you need any additional details. This is just a simple schematic of how sites would operate and the intent here is just kind of simply show the juxtaposition of sites in relation to the state water project. So on the bottom right corner, you'll see Lake Orville. So, uh, on the, uh, bottom right corner, uh, you'll see Lake Orville, uh, where it says state, state water project, and then, uh, the sites project is, um, is off to the, uh, left-hand side. Uh, and I think one of the things I, I will note is that this project is using as much of the existing infrastructure as possible. Uh, so the bulk of the costs, uh, is going directly into the cost of the, uh, the construction of the 1.5 million acre reservoir. And the diversion points, uh, are already pre-existing. We're going to be using two canals, uh, from, uh, Glen Calusa as well as, uh, to Hama Calusa, um, to, you know, bring water in into sites and also for releases from sites. So there, there's been every effort to, uh, reduce costs as much as we can, uh, on this, you know, project, but still ma- maintaining viability of it. The only new, uh, structure, I think, well, one of the few main structures that, uh, are going to be constructed in addition to reservoir is the Donegan Pipeline, which you'll see encircled in the red dotted line. That's a four-mile pipeline. Uh, I think it's, uh, probably like a eight-feet diameter, uh, pipeline. So that's, that's a new, uh, connector, uh, from the, uh, the existing canals, uh, down to the Sacramento River. So for, in terms of costs, uh, the base facilities are shown, uh, pointing straight up. Uh, so all the participants pay for that, and downstream facilities, uh, you know, the south of Delta contractors, you know, for example, like CVWD would have to pay for that to convey the water, uh, down to where it needs to go. Uh, one of the, uh, key changes in the, uh, during this, uh, ensuing period has been a change, uh, from the cost recovery basis. So originally, uh, when I came to the board, uh, and discussed this, uh, a few years ago, um, they were, you, the, uh, project was actually contemplating a delivery, uh, recovery method. Uh, so basically, uh, the cost would be recovered based on how much deliveries that they would actually be getting. Uh, realizing the fact that the very, uh, the variability of the deliveries, uh, we switched over to the storage model. Uh, so basically, what that means is that there's, uh, 1.38 million acre feet of life storage in the reservoir. Each participant gets, um, about 6.23 times what their participation level is. So for CVWD, our participation level is 10,000 acre feet, so we get over 62,000 acre feet of storage, uh, to do with as we wish, uh, in the reservoir. Um, and then I think the other, uh, change here between, uh, the two, the two methods, um, is the inclusion of reclamation in participation. Uh, they're in for about 7% of the project through Win Act funding, so that offsets some of the costs. So there's a slight reduction, uh, in the, um, uh, financial participation. I think, uh, in the previous method, it was 64% for south of Delta contractors, and, uh, for, uh, for the new storage, uh, it's about 54%. So there's a, about 10% offset. So the next item I want to cover very quickly is what, what do we actually get? So I'm showing two different delivery patterns. Uh, these are simulated for, um, all of the south, uh, south of Delta contractors, not just, uh, you know, not just specifically for CVWD. The, uh, way that you would look at this is the, um, x-axis is actually the Sacramento Valley index. So it, uh, going from left to right, uh, goes from very wet to very dry. And you'll see that, uh, the wet and above normal years constitute about 50% of the occurrences in hydrology. And, uh, there is zero deliveries. That's a model during that time. Uh, and really, you know, for us, that makes a lot of sense because there's simply no demand, uh, due to, you know, these excess wet conditions. And so Metropolitan simply can't take it. So the water's going to be banked for these dry years, and you can see like, uh, even though, you know, CVWD's, um, participation is 10,000 acre feet during the, uh, you know, dry and critical years, uh, the deliveries, those waters, you know, can be much higher than the 10,000. In fact, approaching like 19,000 or 20,000 acre feet. So again, this is not a specific model, uh, to just CVWD, but this is model as a whole. Um, so because we're not taking water in half those years, um, and, you know, we've got some losses through the delta and so on. The long-term delivery average, uh, across all year types is about, uh, 7,200 acre feet. So in terms of costs, uh, project cost changes, I already signaled, uh, earlier, uh, that the amendment two, uh, cost is about $3 billion. Uh, if you inflate it to current dollars, it's, uh, 3.13 billion, uh, as, um, compared to the amendment three cost of 3.93 billion. So it's about $800 million difference. So the main cost drivers, I'll go, uh, through here very, very quickly. So, um, about $570 million, uh, is contained with, or is attributed, uh, to the changes in the reservoir and dams. Uh, I think since I came to the board last, uh, site staff, uh, consultants have done, uh, a deeper drill down into, you know, what's necessary for aggregate, for, uh, fillers and dams and waste removal and so on. And, uh, to nobody's surprise, the, you know, these rates, uh, reflect the current market conditions, which have been going up. And, um, so anyways, that, that accounts for the $570 million difference, uh, the bulk of it. Uh, another $170 million difference comes in, uh, in the, uh, in the roads, uh, the increase in length, and then some of the, uh, rock slope protections and so on. And then the rest of it, uh, which, you know, have to do with, uh, pumping plants, uh, transmission and environmental mitigation, those largely stayed, uh, the same. I know that site staff, um, you know, is, uh, concerned about these cost increases. So, you know, we, our task to them is, uh, to sharpen their pencils, uh, during this phase to see if there's any kind of reductions that could occur. Okay, so I want to move, uh, very quickly to project funding. Uh, since there's an increase in costs, uh, I think the other lever that we can pull to kind of keep, uh, the project affordable, uh, especially for our SAC Valley, um, agricultural interests is to see, okay, how much money, uh, do the, um, participants actually have to, you know, have to go out and bond for our own? So I think the philosophy has always been, okay, let's go out for grants and, uh, low-interest loans, uh, from the federal government, uh, as much as we can. So you can see that the composition of this out of 3.93, uh, billion, uh, a full 55% of this, uh, has been, uh, accounted for through, um, through either grants or loans. So the state contribution is about $836 million in terms of Prop One. So the, uh, I'm presenting two options here today. Uh, option one, which is original plan, where we go for, uh, some, uh, bucket of WIFIA funding. And option two is, uh, based on EPA's input after we submitted, uh, for WIFIA funding. So for option one, I'll cover it first, and, um, I'm also, uh, providing some interest rates, uh, for these borrowing, uh, components, uh, based on, you know, our current, um, uh, current rate of borrowing versus historical. And I think we'll agree that, uh, up until now, I think the, uh, the current rates have been historical lows. So under original plan, uh, where we were going to, uh, go out and get some, uh, off, cost offsets for WIFIA, uh, the original plan was go out for six, uh, 600 million dollars worth of WIFIA funding. Uh, up until then, I think, uh, you know, I think that was probably one of the largest, uh, sums of, uh, contributions from WIFIA. And, uh, if we were successful with that, we'd go in for another 800 million. So it's 1.4 billion dollars worth of WIFIA loans. So that leaves the participant share, if we were successful, at about, uh, a billion dollars. So about 25% uh, that we would actually have to go out and bond for. Uh, based on favorable input, uh, from the WIFIA, um, selection committee, if you will, from EPA, uh, they actually encouraged the project to go for four, the full 49% of, um, uh, loans from WIFIA. So that would actually drive the participants' cost share, um, that we would have to bond for directly at, uh, about 430 million. So that's a, that's a pretty significant, uh, uh, cost reduction, if you will. So what does that mean? Uh, if you kind of, uh, look at the, um, uh, the right-hand side, uh, where, you know, I, I show like the historical rates of 3.5 to 5%, uh, highlighted in two different colors. So 5% would be what we would estimate for our current participa- uh, participant bonding rate. Uh, whereas it'd be about 3.5% for WIFIA. So it was a full 1.5% difference. Uh, so over the course of the loan, it could be quite significant. So that's sort of the project funding side. So how do you translate that to, um, the unit costs? So based on the preliminary cost analysis that was provided to us, um, to all the contractors, uh, I'm showing two, uh, the two bookends right now. I, I did not on purpose show the, um, for, uh, 49% uh, WIFIA funding because the news came in so late that the site staff did not have a chance to analyze for that. But I think, uh, it's safe to say that, uh, under the, uh, if, for option one, which is the 1.4 billion dollars, um, the average, uh, unit cost is 755 acre feet, uh, dollars per acre foot. If we have no, uh, WIFIA funding at all, uh, and that number, uh, drives up to $916 acre foot. Now bear in mind, these are, uh, costs at the point of delivery, uh, from the sites reservoir. So you have, you know, you still have to make it through the state water project system for delivery exchanges, you know, with Metropolitan. So I purposely didn't put that in here because, uh, we're still under live negotiations, uh, with the state on what, um, that penalty and losses could be. And the transportation costs, uh, for the state water project, you know, it seems quite variable. Uh, it could be low as $160 acre foot, and I think this year, because of, you know, how dry it is, I think we've seen that number, you know, as high as like $280 acre foot. So, um, you know, the biggest part of this, uh, cost, unit cost is the debt service, uh, or repayment. So you can see, you know, if we get additional WIFIA funding, you know, how that could really favorably influence, uh, you know, that, uh, that unit cost. Okay, so in summary, uh, what do we get and what does it cost? We get 62, over 62,000 acre feet of storage to do what, with what we need to. The long-term delivery average, uh, is about 7,200 acre feet a year. Uh, as of 2021 dollars, the, uh, our share, uh, CVWD's share of the, uh, costs, if we're going to pay off at one time, is 179 million dollars. And this is obviously without any debt service. We paid about 2.5 million dollars to date, and we got about $455,000, uh, back, uh, on, uh, to be applied towards future, uh, payments. So, um, again, we're asking for $4 million, uh, to continue, uh, participation in this. And I think this right, right side graphic, uh, just kind of reminds us of, you know, the flexibility, uh, of what we can actually do with this water. We can actually lease storage. We can hold this water in wet years, uh, and then release water and, or sell water if we need to. Uh, you know, these discussions were, um, still taking place with Metropolitan to figure out, you know, uh, how the relationship goes. Uh, that was not negotiated, uh, in 2019 as our, as part of our amended, uh, restated, uh, exchange agreement. Uh, the schedule, uh, just very quickly, uh, some of the, the key high, um, key points, uh, key future points. I think mid-2022, the, um, environmental documents are going to be prepared, so the, uh, notice the termination and record decision are going to be issued. Uh, and from that point, uh, it gives us clearance to kind of move ahead, uh, with a preferred project, which, uh, you know, drives and gives us more certainty on the design. And then a couple of other, uh, points I want to highlight to you, um, is in early 2023 to mid-2023, we're going to be talking about, uh, probably a lot more, uh, serious detail about bank financing. Uh, right now, you know, we have an ability to kind of change our participation level. But, uh, I think after that point where we go into bank financing, uh, I think the ability to change is going to be much more difficult. So, um, again, we're hoping to break ground like in 2025, and that's the schedule. So, um, it's a 120, 20 million dollar effort. Our portion of it is $4 million, uh, and I, uh, staff has been working very closely with the site staff, uh, on the, uh, allocation of dollars. And we think that the, uh, you know, this pie chart, which shows, you know, where the dollars are going into, uh, engineering and design, and then, uh, getting permits and financing, uh, is the right, you know, way to, you know, spend the money, and we're, we're comfortable with this. So with this, um, I'd like to, uh, kind of close it out, this out by, uh, asking the board to, you know, if, to consider this. Uh, and, uh, to also consider the fact that this does not qualify as a project under CEQA. Uh, and with that, I'll kind of, uh, finish out the discussion by, um, you know, putting the requested actions up here, uh, one more time for your consideration. And be happy to take any questions, or, uh, I think if Jerry's on, I think, uh, he, he's also able to address the board as well.
Okay. Thanks, Robert.
All right. Very comprehensive. It, it doesn't, um, it doesn't strike me as unusual that our 4 million of the 120 million on the project is 3.3% of the project, which is about where we're at on the state water project too. So, I mean, it, um, probably a pretty good number, uh, when you look at that. I'm curious to hear a little bit more about the, uh, storage model. Is this going to be run by the bureau? Uh, will manage the, the, uh, inventories and this, and the storage space? And is it going to be like San Luis where, you know, if there's excess water, we'll be subject to loss, or can we just run it down the river, or how, how does this work?
Yeah, uh, thanks for the question, Director Nelson. Uh, and, you know, certainly, you know, Jerry could, uh, you know, step in, but I'll, I'll take a, you know, first cut at it. So, uh, this project, uh, was envisioned to be, uh, built, uh, and operated, you know, by, uh, Joint Powers Authority. Uh, I think, you know, certainly, um, you know, so, some of the SAC Valley, uh, participants, you know, are Central Valley, uh, contractors, uh, as you noted. Uh, but I think there was a desire to kind of, uh, keep and retain, uh, the operations, the flexibility. I think under, um, you know, the JPA model, rather than being under the, you know, under the, um, supervision, if you will, uh, of DWR or, um, reclamation. So, um, in terms of, you know, the, uh, San Luis model, yes, you're right. Uh, I think, you know, there's a lot of competing space right now, you know, competing interests for San Luis. Uh, and, you know, and I would say that, you know, some, and these are the kind of discussions we're having right now in terms of, uh, the creation of additional waters, uh, you know, through the Delta conveyance project. Because, you know, that's a wet year project, and, uh, we, you know, we take the big gulp, uh, when it's extremely wet. But that doesn't come out without any consequences. You know, I mean, you know, when you have water that's conveyed, you need a place to store it. And, you know, so the temporary storage does to get displaced, you know, creates Article 21. So that's the good side of things, but it also forces, you know, uh, contractors who, you know, uh, may not be prepared to evacuate their water, you know, if they do lose it, you know, to your point. I think for, um, the sites, uh, operations, we're, uh, kind of touching on some of that right now. Uh, I think, you know, most of our efforts have been focused on just getting through the, uh, the permitting phase. But, uh, in the operations of it, I think, uh, the JPA has made it very clear that the, uh, way, you know, it's going to be managed. We put in, we, you know, for example, I just, you know, talked specifically to CVWD. Uh, we would put in our water orders, you know, I think during this time, you know, basically from like, I think, January until, you know, maybe like May, and say, okay, this is the way we want to move our water. Uh, and then I think, uh, during, you know, the time when the water can be moved, uh, you know, during the transfers window, uh, you know, that water gets moved. Now during this time, um, again, you know, the water and the, uh, the way that it's managed is completely up to us. So if we spill, uh, it's bad on us. Well, I guess bad on me if I'm still here. But, uh, you know, I think the, the thought is that you would actually, you know, you, you would anticipate, um, you know, carve out some room, you know, just make sure like the spill never happens. And I think the, the other thing I was also thinking about is, you know, before that happens, uh, because you've got, you know, 20, you know, three contractors or participants in this. You know, during, during those times, uh, when you see extremely wet years, you know, maybe you could do some, you know, exchanges before you spill and say, okay, you know, you guys up in, you know, in the SAC Valley, you got a ability to take this. Um, you know, maybe we can negotiate something. So, you know, tho- those are the kind of things that are kind of, uh, being, uh, talked about right now. And of course, you know, nobody wants to spill. Uh, so, you know, that, that is, uh, something that definitely that, uh, is, you know, definitely on forefront of my mind.
So Jerry, this might be a question for you, uh, so to the Jerry Brown. Um, are there new participants coming on? And, and if so, what, what, uh, what's the methodology for them to buy into the system that is equitable to the current participants?
Yes, Director Nelson, uh, and, and members of the board, uh, pleased to see you again. Uh, good morning. And, uh, as a matter of fact, coincidentally, I've, I've got my iPad working on the side here because we are meeting with the list of potential new participants right now to give them a briefing on where we are. Um, there's about 30, 30,000 plus of additional, uh, interest in the project. Um, so that represents about 15% of the project. So we're oversubscribed about, by about, uh, 1.15 factor, uh, which is a good thing. It's, it's telling us that this is a project that's in high demand and, and badly needed. Um, so what we're planning to do, the, the board, the, the authority board has already established a priority system largely to address, uh, new participation. So we're walking through, once we get everybody's kind of lineup of where they are as a current participant, we'll walk through that priority system to, uh, bring on new participation. Right now, we're probably in about the 5,000 acre feet, uh, reduction total for all the local agencies. So there, there's a, there's a gap there for about 5,000. So we've got plenty of new participants to fill. So we've got plenty of new participants to fill that gap. What they pay when they come in as a new participant is two components. One, they pay the same four hundred dollars an acre foot that Robert is asking for your approval on today for forward-looking costs. And then two, they pay past costs in an amount of two hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents, which has been determined to be an appropriate unit share for all of the past investments that your agencies and all the other agencies have invested in sites to get us to this point. So at that point, everybody that's paid in will be paid up to the same amount as each other.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to approve these requested actions?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Good. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Get that passed by all.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thanks, Robert.
Robert and Jerry.
And Jerry, yes. Yeah, thanks, Jerry. Thanks, Robert.
We are almost three and a half hours in here, and we still have a lot in front of us because of the closed session. So board member, general comments, Director Nelson.
No, just kind of say, reiterate, it's, it's a dry, I think the state water project's still at fifteen percent. But I noticed that Carla Nemeth sent a nice letter, kind of warning that something else may happen depending on hydrology. So don't be surprised if I ask for my money back on that debt, on that.
How much did I get for that?
Well, nothing from nothing leaves nothing. But the snow water equivalent is only sixty-one percent, but we are fifty-seven percent of the April first average. So, you know, pretty paltry in snow numbers. Colorado River is a little bit better than that. The Colorado River snow water equivalent is ninety-one percent normal. So it's a little better. LADWP is only seventy-three percent of normal up in, you know, Owens Lake, Mammoth area over there. So still pretty dry. Eight station index is, you know, kind of running about the same, about sixty percent. So still pretty dry and looking good.
Right.
That's all I have.
Lovely. Director Aguilera, Director Bianca.
I just want to say, I mean, I remember our, the first meeting with the, on the sites reservoir, and we, we debated in here on if we should even do it or not. And, you know, thank God, thank God we did, you know? You know, we may be waiting in line like, like, like other people are. I just wanted to make that comment.
No comments.
Yeah, and I'll pass also. Meetings, let's roll through these meetings. We have the Director Estrada, I guess, February twenty-third, Environmental Assessment Committee.
Yes, we met, approved and authorized for public review and comment the Valley View Mobile Home Park water consolidation project. Subsequent initial study and mitigated negative reparation. It was, went through a presentation on, on what the project consisted of, different alignments, pretty straightforward project. That's what we did.
And then we had the twenty-fourth Salt and Sea Board, Authority Board.
I did not attend that meeting.
I was there. Lot of talk of Lithium Valley. We had a big presentation. I know our supervisor asked to explore the lithium on Riverside County, because there's got to be some there too. On Friday, there's going to be a North Lake Pilot, North Lake Pilot Project demonstration. I'm going to be out there. And then on the other side of the sea in Salt and City, they're going to do that project too. So I'll be there Friday, and that'll be interesting.
All right. Let's see, I met with Scott Byrd on February twenty-fourth to discuss State of the District Address and some concepts for that. Good meeting. I think we were almost an hour and a half in that meeting. But we went over a lot. Later that day, DVBA Board Installation Dinner, and that was just kind of recognizing Todd Hooks, who's our new board chair there. February twenty-fifth, Upper Basin States, Director Nelson.
Yeah, that was actually a seven Basin States coordinating committee, Principals Coordinating Committee. And we met with the Bureau to talk about, and each other, talk about the latest hydrology where it looks like Powell's going to go below thirty-five, twenty-five this year. And so we were talking about kind of future planning out there in terms of, well, what if it's fifty percent next year? You know, so it was challenging meeting.
Then see, twenty-fifth, Director Aguilera with that webinar on the real estate.
Yeah, I, I think I actually copied the slides where, that were presented at the webinar, were distributed to the board, so I won't go into a lot of detail. But a couple of highlights from the seminar on real estate is that last year, we saw a thirty percent increase in, in real estate, which is probably not a big surprise, but they're forecasting even a larger potential increase in values this year. There were night, almost nineteen hundred new home permits issued last year, and they're expecting that to be even more this year. So lots of activity.
Yeah, thanks for that. I actually did get a, a copy of that, and I've shared it with other people. So pretty interesting. Good information. Twenty-eighth, we had California Farm Water Coalition, Director Nelson.
Yeah, that was a Zoom call, and we had some good reports about what the coalition is doing in the media front. And I received a, subsequently from that meeting, I received kind of a follow-up on a little video from the Mozak Science Center that, in Sacramento, that the coalition has been very supportive of and has been able to apply a lot of the farm water usage data in. And so I'll send that to you, Jim, and you can get it out to the rest of the group.
Aye, sir.
All right. See, discussion on the twenty-eighth, Director Aguilera.
Yeah, so had a good opportunity to meet with, with Jim and Kerry and, and other staff members, just to get an overall update on the projects in the North Cathedral City area, and some projects that are related to that at the Bob Hope Farner Intersection. So appreciate the staff time on that.
And also Ranch and Roach Town Hall on the, on the fourth.
So, yeah, had a chance to sit in on the, on their update. It was accommodation presentation by the mayor and by members of the chamber and the Commission Bureau. And just a couple of highlights, the mayor did talk pretty extensively about the new Disney Cartoon Project and talked a lot about, talked some about misinformation he believed that was coming out regarding the water usage resulting from the, from the lagoon and how that is actually using less than what was originally projected. And then also spoke about the Larry Ellison Project, Sensei Porcupine Creek Hotel and Spa, which is a two hundred million dollar, two hundred and thirty acre project, which is now moving forward. And finally mentioned that of the twelve hundred units of Del Webb Project, eight hundred have been sold and were built.
Amazing.
Yeah, it really is.
He's going to put a hotel up there?
Yeah, hotel, retreat, spa.
Hotel retreat.
Oh, up at the, yeah, at the Porcupine Creek.
Porcupine Creek, yeah.
At least, at least people get to enjoy it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
I want to know what the nightly rate is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it'll be unique in the world, for sure. All right, so any other meetings we need to report on?
I have a couple, Mr. Chairman. On March second, there was a California Agencies, Powell Mead Operational Alternatives Meeting. Jim and Robert participated in that, as well as the other contractors or CRV members on that. And it was discussing maybe some, how to, how to address the hydrology that's appearing at Lake Powell and going to move down river going forward. It was, you know, just throwing out ideas to see what sticks on the wall and what might be able to be done or not, so.
Good.
And then on March fourth, we had, that was a Friday, it was actually in Denver, Seven Basin States, again, Principals Coordinating Committee. I participated by Zoom, as well as Chris Harris, a follow-up on, on the March second meeting from the California Agencies and, and the prior week. This is becoming quite a intense, I think, addressing of the hydrology, especially as the thirty-five, twenty-five number in Lake Powell is becoming a very important deal for power generation in, in the Upper Basin and almost, well, really a matter of national security in terms of number of military installations that depend on that power. And with the oil prices, as you know, this is a much cheaper alternative than natural gas or other, other petroleum-based energy. So, so not only is the water issue important for us, but this nexus with the power is becoming a driver in the negotiations. That was March fourth, and that's the only other one I have, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, I have a few meetings. On March third, I had a SAFER meeting, first meeting of the year. As you know, that's the advisory group created by SB two hundred. And we went over the drinking water needs assessment and the committee outreach and engagement strategy that the SAFER staff are working on. It's a lot of good information. I shared it with some staff, maybe some opportunities for us to position ourselves to receive some funding in the future. So that was that. And then that, that same day, I had a meeting with the Salt and Sea Authority and the County of Riverside Supervisor's Office. There was a meeting that was put together for General Motors. I think they were doing a, some site visits, Hell's Kitchen, I think they went out there to Hell's Kitchen. And they're really trying to get an understanding of what's going on around the Salt and Sea as it relates to the lithium extraction proposals. I think there's a lot of interest, especially now with the meeting that took place, I think, a few weeks ago between the governor and President Biden around the lithium possibilities around the Salt and Sea. So I think that's attracted a lot of attention. And so General Motors was here trying to get an understanding of, you know, what the community wants in both Riverside County and Imperial County, I think, to, you know, try to get in front of whatever they're trying to do. So a very interesting topic. That was it.
We did. Is there a motion to approve pretty in for meetings reported on?
Make a motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, that passed. General Manager Report.
Mr. Just quickly, COVID update. We've got one current qualifying case, so two hundred and forty-six recovered altogether. We've got one person off right now and one case per date in the month of March. We've deactivated our pandemic task force. I think I sent an email around. We've closed down our emergency operations center, and we're trying to get back to business as usual.
Thank you. Counsel Report.
And I will pass in the interest of time, Mr. President.
Do we have any, no department reports? I don't think so.
No, sir.
Nobody brave enough to... At this time, we're adjourned to closed session to address items thirteen A through E, and we will reconvene here after closed session to report out. All right, so we're good to go. Don't need to sit down, I don't think. Regular meeting is hereby reconvened, and we have no reportable actions from the closed session, and with no further business, we're adjourned.